Calling to, uh, call to order the 5:30 Sherwood City Council meeting, uh, City Council Work Session. You don't have the flag salute in here.
Generally for a work session, we wouldn't do the flag salute, but as far as a roll call, if you choose not to do a roll call, Counselor Folsom has joined us on conference call.
We can do a roll call, because everybody's here then.
Perfect. Mayor Middleton?
Here.
Counsel President Henderson?
Here.
Counselor Folsom?
Here.
Counselor Grant?
Here.
Counselor Langer?
Here.
Counselor Clark?
Here.
Counselor Butterfield, thank you.
Is she on a hands-free device if she's driving?
Yes, she is.
Let's hope so, Mayor.
Go ahead.
She said she was in Eugene and it's foggy, so she needs to be driving safely. So, we have an extended work session tonight, Mayor and Counsel. We're scheduled to go to 8:30. We may or may not get through everything. There's a lot of issues to discuss tonight that may take longer or shorter depending on how much the Council interacts. So, tonight is a series of presentations. So, for example, you're going to hear from our court, which you do every year in January, kind of a quick overview. We're going to talk about Council projects and priorities to make sure that we've got the most accurate, up-to-date list as we get into budget season for fiscal year 2014, 2015. There's some issues that we'll be looking for some direction from you. The medical marijuana dispensary, after bringing you up to speed, I think we'll be looking for some direction from the Council. Same on the police staffing study. So, it's a mixture of items tonight, so we hope that we have some good discussion. So, with that, I'd like to invite Lisa Lane, our Court Administrator, to come up, and she's going to present about a 10- or 15-minute annual report for the municipal court. And our Judge.
Good evening, everybody. There you go.
Okay. Good evening. Just a quick snapshot of last year, what happened in municipal court. Got a couple of slides for you to look at. So, the first slide where it shows the last four years of citation, kind of the activity with regular sites and the introduction of Red Flex. You can see the peaks there where we introduced it in, you know, beginning of 2011, and then it kind of went down, and then that's, that change happened where the, uh, the right-hand turn was implemented versus all the headlights were for all three lanes. And then, last summer, there was some construction, ODOT construction, so it was down for a few months number-wise, and then continued to go up. So, and then, you know, I think it'll go up probably a little bit and then plateau again, but we'll see when that happens. Yes, yep. And then the next slide is talking about top Ford violations. You can see where, you know, the Red Flex, the cellphone speeding failed to be a traffic control device where that's either a stop sign or a stoplight. So, you can see the differences on that. And then budget highlights. You can see 2012, 2013 minus expenses and the difference on, on those numbers. And then, we just did, I did a little recap on the collection percentage. In 2012, 24% of the cases that we sent to collections, that's the amount that we collected, and then 2013, 36%. So, you know, if we continue to consistently send cases to collections, it'll even be better, so. And the last slide is, you can see the citation per month, staffing on FTEs, and then citations per month. An example, in 2013, I added this, 430 people appeared for trial, and then 1,800 appeared for arraignment. That's not the gross amount of people that were in the docket. There's generally about 50% that on a Friday after, or Friday morning, there's roughly about 100 people that are in the docket, but basically 50% show up. And then there are various ways after that. They send money in the mail, they'll come in, and, and then what's left over is taken care of with overdue. And then we've also tried to be as efficient as we can with staffing as far as online payments. We have a module within our full-court software where people can pay online, and so the nice thing about that is it, it does the disposition, which saves on staff time. And then, we have Web Labs on our staff computers upstairs, and, um, and then everything's imported with e-citations and photo red light. Any questions?
So, you see, so your court expenses went down almost $100,000?
We did some staff, Julie, want to?
Is that better? Yes, the expenses went down. We had staffing reductions in the last couple of years due to layoffs. When the right turn signal changed, the citation numbers dropped dramatically, and so we reduced our staffing levels over the last couple of years, so yes, expenses have come down.
That's good, because your revenue's up, so.
Yeah, it is.
What percent do you get back on this, that refer to collections usually? Do you have any idea? Because it really went up, 24 to 36%.
It varies because we're not totally consistent on sending them. If we were, I'd have a better number for you, so I'm not sure.
Mayor, would you like that number researched, or?
No, no, I just, no, no, it's just.
Okay.
Use of this collection agency is fairly new, so that's part of the reason you're seeing an increase as well.
Okay. No.
Counsel President?
So, when somebody appears in court and is then fined, and maybe you can tell me, what's the fine for cellphone use?
160 now.
160?
It just went up as, as of January 1st, it was 110.
Oh, I thought it was 200 and something.
Uh-uh.
You can go up on that too, right? Is there a cap on that now? Isn't it 500?
500.
So, if they can't pay you at the time they're assessed a fine, can they set up a payment plan?
Absolutely.
Okay. And what is the minimum payment plan that they can?
Um, we kind of use our discretion on that. Typically, the lowest we go is $25 a month. Most people pay about 50 a month, and then there's a fee that's added on to do that, according to our fee schedule.
Oh, a monthly fee?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, it's a one-time charge. Depends, it's based on the unpaid balance.
Okay.
Is how it's calculated.
And everybody knows that that's an option for them, correct?
Yes, uh-huh.
Okay. And that's explained during their?
That they can make payments? I typically don't mention that upfront, because I don't want to encourage that. I want people to take care of it, get it paid, get it done.
Sure, sure.
If that comes up, it often comes up with the staff and Lisa, or with the other staff will explain, explain that we do have an option of making payments.
Okay. Thank you.
One thing I want to comment is, I never hear anything negative about the courts. It's really surprising, because you guys pump a lot of people through here, so, other than your vehicle, you know, issue, but, uh, I think you guys are doing a great job, really are, so.
Thank you.
But nail those cellphone, man. When I'm riding my bike, they're always cutting in front of you and stuff, so that's the number one. That's just my personal opinion, so, but.
I see them too.
But no, I have never heard any negative comment about the courts, which is really nice.
Yeah, I can say, I've come to court just to watch, and I think staff does an amazing job, and Judge Jack, you're very, you know, professional, and, and I think you speak to those people, you know, very kindly, and make them think about their choices, and, and I don't see it as a reprimand. I mean, it's kind of a reprimand to be in court already, but I think you treat them with respect and with a level of kindness that I don't think is seen in other, not always seen in other municipal courts, so.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Appreciate that.
Part of my philosophy has always been that for a lot of these people, this is going to be their only contact with the court system. So, even though they're there for a penalty, it's, I'd still like to try to make it as positive as, as I can for them. You know, and then, most of them behave themselves, some of them don't. Sounds like you've been fortunate enough that you've never been in there and seen it when things go bad, but it does occasionally, so, and we take care of it when we have to.
Yeah. I have heard people admit things that I couldn't believe they were willing to admit, but when they get up there, they just seem to want to be truthful, I guess, so.
Uh-huh. Okay. For the most part.
Well, every ticket I've got deserves, so I'm not arguing with that one.
Should we ask for a show of hands? Who's going to? No, no, just kidding.
I haven't gotten any Sherwood ones for a long, no, geez.
We can fix that. You've got the cheap ones.
Now you wear a mask, you know, so. Any other questions? Thanks for coming tonight, I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I did, I did want to thank the Council for having us back again. This is important to us, because it tells us, it sends us a message that you guys care about the court, and you care about having a professional court, and that's always been important to us. There's a lot of municipal courts in the state, there's a very large, broad spectrum of professionalism, and we like to think that we're towards the high end of that, and we like to think that part of that is with, is because you encourage that professionalism, so.
Guys, one more thing.
We appreciate it.
I just have one more question. In the past, we've had municipal court over at the police station, and you've moved here, I assume because it's more practical, and as far as having everybody here and having equipment and computers, and is that continuing to work well for you?
It works really well. Dragging all of our files and everything.
Back and forth.
Set up, back and forth, just wasn't very efficient. So, it's, it works really well here.
It's a lot more practical, and we were given a lot of hospitality at the police department, but it's also, it's good for appearances. We look more independent as a court when we're not at the police department.
I agree.
And so, we, we like it over here.
Yeah.
And we were treated very well at the police station, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before we break, I did want to, I know you've all heard this story, my car was stolen, and I just wanted to, to recognize the police department for the good work they did. I was really impressed with the effort they end to, they, they put into helping me out, so, and I'm sure they probably do that for all the other citizens. I don't think it was just because it was the judge's car that got stolen, so, I'll leave it at that.
Were the keys in it?
No, the.
Honest question?
No, I actually thought, when we watched the video, I thought he got into it so easily. I thought maybe I did leave, leave the keys in, or at least left it unlocked. But when they arrested him that evening, he had a key that was remarkably similar to mine, so that would explain that, so.
Okay, thank you. Our next item, we tentatively scheduled this for about a 15-minute discussion, of course, we can go longer if you'd like. Julie and I want to introduce to the Council a new budget forecast tool that we are putting together. We're just about to start the budget preparation for fiscal year 2014, 15. Julie is in her role as Finance Director for the first time. This will be my second budget, and I think in terms of the feedback I got from Counsel, you're very concerned, we have some long-term decisions to make. So, we, as a group, have put together what I think is the beginning of a much more sophisticated tool that you're going to see throughout the process. We want to introduce this tool next week to the Budget Committee as well. It will probably get more complicated, because there are assumptions that we want to put into the tool to get better forecasts, and I have a feeling that you, as Budget Committee members and counselors, are going to want to add certain complexity. So, this is basically just an intro. Rob Moody from TKW, our Auditor's Office, worked with us on this, so we reached out to their offices. They see a lot of different budgets around the state. We asked for best practices in terms of putting something together that will help us look out on that three- to five-year horizon. So, I'm going to turn it over with that introduction to Julie, and she's going to walk through the basics of this, and then we'll take questions.
Okay. So, what this sheet shows is, first, we put together our budget to actual history for the last few years, and this is just the general fund, is what we've started with, is what you're looking at. And then, we went through, and we put together some basic assumptions of what changes we're looking at over the next few years, and again, this is just the skeleton, we're going to be adding more to it. But based on population, property taxes, you know, increase in personal services, materials and services, adding the community center operations in. So, we just took some, some real basic assumptions and put them into this model, so that we can change those assumptions as we move along, up, down, and this will automatically recalculate, so we can see what the different changes will do to our budget from year to year. There we go, does that help? So, here's the out-years, the three years out that will change based on changes in assumptions. And then, the third component of this is that we get really nice, pretty charts and graphs, to make things look, be able to see them easier, and I don't want you to focus on the numbers, because this is very base level at this point, so I'm kind of going quickly, so you don't focus on the numbers. But we really wanted to just introduce you to the fact that we've got this tool now, and we will be adding to it. Right now, we just have personal services as a base number. We're going to break that out to PERS, health insurance, COLA increases, and that sort of thing, so that we can refine these assumptions even more. Do you have questions?
Can you go back to the other sheet?
Numbers, or the assumptions?
No, this one here.
Okay.
The little red marks on there, is that to show?
They're, they're comments.
Just comments, okay.
So, if you click those on, Mayor, there'll be comments that are in those boxes as placeholders. So, Julie, without going into a lot of detail, when Craig was here, and put together his revenue and expenditure projections, he did not use a tool like this, correct?
Correct. He used just real base assumptions, increase in personal services, increase in materials and services, and very, very conservative numbers and increases in revenue. So, this is more sophisticated, we can get more detail in it.
And even if we don't have the revenue for, some people still plug them in, like our long-term maintenance of parks and things like that will be in here, correct?
Yes, as we move through the budget process this year, we'll be adding in amounts for parks maintenance, for facility maintenance, those different categories, and seeing what they do, because we've talked about the fact that we have, I don't want to say an extra million dollars, but we have a higher fund balance than what our required goal is, and so this is an opportunity for us to play with different ideas, different things that we might be able to use some of that money on as these one-time expenditures. This will help us gauge that easier.
And see the impacts. What I like about this is you can ask, as well as we can ask, a lot of what-ifs. What if we are a little bit more conservative in our revenue? What does that look like versus more optimistic? Or if we cut this type of expenditure, what does it do? Not just in the next year, but over that three-year period. We can extend this out five years, it's very easy. We just thought that three years seemed to be a more reasonable timeframe to be looking at in terms of a crystal ball, that we can extend it out another two years very easily. I wanted to have Mr. Moody here tonight to answer any questions, but he's on vacation, so.
25th wedding anniversary.
Other questions you might have at this point?
So, the issue that the Mayor brought up, I'm not sure I understood your answer. So, this is a model you've, you've developed regarding just the general fund?
Correct.
Okay. And is this model unique to the general fund, or is this model the model you intend to use for forecasting for public works, or police, or community services, or community development?
Those are all components in here. Let me scroll over a little bit, and you can see that administration has its section, community development has a section. It's a very small screen, I'm sorry.
Got you.
So, there is, we did break it out by each of those appropriation levels that we do in the budget.
Julie, I know you don't want to show too much of the charts, because the numbers may change, but if you can show the charts, because it breaks it out by the different departments, if you scroll down.
Oh, okay.
So, ultimately, I mean, the general fund is our toughest fund in terms of dealing with, with our financial issues, but we want to get this to all the funds, quite honestly, at least all the major funds, but we're focused on the general fund, because that seems to be where we spend a lot of time and energy in terms of budget every year, so.
And it's more volatile. With the enterprise funds, you know, we have a fee, we know what our consumption or number of customers are, and we pretty much know what it takes to service those, so we don't have a lot of sway in that from year to year, unless we're doing maintenance or projects. But the general fund tends to have more sway in it. I'm excited about this.
Projects too, a lot easier. Which is really nice.
This will make my job so much easier. I'm very excited to be able to use this.
But it will be a tool that will be used by the Budget Committee, because as you ask those what-ifs, well, what if we do X? What impact does it have? At least on that time, that three- to five-year timeframe? Because I think part of what we struggle with today is we might be financially sound for one year, but as you have said, Mayor, your concern about those long-term costs, and are we going to have, how much money should we be putting away to address those long-term needs three, four, or five years out? And this will help us get there a little bit better, I think.
It'll be easier to read too, it'll be more understandable, so.
Yes.
Any other questions?
So, do you plan to show this to the Budget Committee?
Yes.
At the next budget meeting?
Yes, next week.
Okay.
Because I think they need to understand it, because they'll see it in the budget process.
So, will this model change the way department heads put their budgets together?
Possibly. I haven't quite gotten that far. It will change as far as personal services costs. I do that portion of the budget. They tell me how many people they need, I tell them what that costs. But this will allow me to make some assumptions about COLAs and PERS changes and that sort of thing, because that really is our biggest expense, is personal services in the general fund.
Right.
And it's also the hardest to make changes to when we're doing assumptions, so this will make that a lot easier. But yeah, we will be using it with the managers and trying to determine how much change they need from year to year, especially with materials and services.
I think it would lend to having more detail.
Yes, and that is the plan for this year, and I'll get into that on the next subject.
So, I have a question on the forecasting part of it. Because in our last budget cycle, Craig had brought us the, the need for the park maintenance, and, and he'd given a long report on that. So, is that, at what point do you decide, is that included in the forecasting? So, who, who makes that decision?
Well, the process will be, as you probably remember, the department heads will put their proposed budgets together over the coming weeks.
Right.
I'm assuming Mr. Sheldon will include the costs, and we're going to talk about those costs later tonight, in terms of what we need for next year and what we need down the road. I'm assuming he will include that in his budget proposal. If he doesn't, I will put it in my budget proposal, because you've made it very clear your concern about the long term. So, those will be in there.
So, if there's an identification piece that is identified this year, then it will be included in the years going forward?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So, does that answer your question, at least at this point? Any other questions from Counsel on this? I think the one thing to think about is the assumptions. If there are other things that you think, well, what happens, the what-ifs, we'll get this out to you in a paper version, but we actually want to make this more robust than what it is now, and we can go back to Rob and say, okay, the Counsel and the Budget Committee is asking this, how do we build that into the model? Okay, thank you. Next item is also related to the budget, and as I stated, we're just about to start the budget preparation process. Julie has a couple of different options she wants to run by the Counsel, in terms of public input and process, for your consideration, and we're looking for direction from you after some discussion. So, Julie, want to, I think you have?
This is, this is the sheet we're talking about. I think all of you should have one. So, since this is my first year of doing this solo, I was trying to look at how we run our budget process and how we can be more efficient, get more public involvement, and make this a, a better process for everyone, and one of the ideas I came up with was, instead of doing evening meetings, to possibly do a Saturday meeting for our budget meetings. So, what you have before you is you have two different options that show what the schedule would be, depending on whether, if we went with a Saturday meeting. And when I say Saturday meeting, I'm thinking probably a nine to two, and we'd serve lunch and get through the whole process in one meeting, or if we went with a traditional schedule that we have used in the past, doing the evening meetings. What the Saturday meetings by us is, it allows us to put our meeting later in the year, which gives us more time to refine our projections, so they'll, they'll be closer. And, like I said, I, I'm hoping that we would get more public participation if we went with a Saturday. It's really hard for some people to get here after work. It's a late night. I know it's a late night for all of us, after working all day, so, and it's more efficient. We could get it done in one day. Now, the downfall is, everybody has to give up Saturday, and I know that's precious time with our families. And then, it shortens the amount of time for follow-up questions, and this is what I was alluding to with Counsel President Henderson, is our process internally is going to be a little different this year in how we put the budget together. What you will see will look relatively the same as what you have in the past, but internally, we're going to have much more detail for each line item and every department's budget, so that I will have a master book that I can go and pull up any department, go to the line item and see what vendors and how much for each contract, so that we have more detail in one place. The departments have that in their own individual departments, but I'm going to be creating a template to consolidate all of that, so that I can have it all in one spot to answer questions. So, my goal is that there wouldn't have to necessarily be a lot of follow-up questions that we'd have to go back and research. I should be able to answer just about anything you could come up with on the spot, I would hope. So, that's one change. So, that's the, the Saturday option, and then, option two is just the traditional option that we have done in the past with two or three evening meetings. So, I'm kind of looking for feedback of, you hate it, you love it, you don't know.
And just before you start in with any questions or feedback, Julie brought this to my, this was her idea, basically, I think it's coming from, we don't get a lot of public participation in the budget process, and as she was thinking about it, maybe if we do a Saturday hearing, that might be more convenient for citizens. It's less convenient for the committee and staff to be on a Saturday, and that's really what this is about. If you're not interested, we don't have to talk about this much. We've also said if we were to do this as an experiment this year, and it didn't work, and you didn't see an upswing in terms of public participation, you can go back to the more traditional evening model. So, really, we kind of, and we wanted to present it to you as Counsel and not to the Budget Committee, so if you guys, as half the Budget Committee, didn't feel you wanted to do this, option one, we wouldn't even necessarily bring it up with the Budget Committee. So, we're looking for your feedback, whether you love or hate the idea, more than anything.
I don't mind it. I'd like you to, if we could do like, a survey month? I'd like you to, if, if we could do like a survey monkey type thing where you could check with people so we know who could make it and who can't make it, and that's the, that's why we usually do the mayor's things, and so I don't know how anybody else feels about it.
I, I agree. I don't mind, and I'm also concerned that if, if one or two members of the budget committee were unable to attend that day, they would miss the entire budget cycle of planning anyway. I mean, they take part the rest of the year, but they'd miss that whole thing, whereas if we have it on three, on three days, someone can miss one and, and still take part in the process. So it would be interesting to see, you know, how many people would be excluded on the 17th of May. Also, I know that oftentimes we will ask questions of other members of staff, such as Craig, or Kristen, or Jeff, or somebody like that, and I wonder how they feel about being put in the same position. Julie, you're, you're more empowered, you feel you're more empowered to answer questions on the spot, but what if, like, for example, we asked Jeff a lot of questions last year, and he had to come back, you know, with his answers, as I recall, that he wasn't always prepared to answer those on the spot. I wonder how they feel about being in that position where we would pretty much have to have the answers from them also.
Well, one option is that we could schedule a short follow-up meeting sometime in that following week, in an evening, to address just those kinds of questions, but try to get through the meat of the, the document and really only have that follow-up meeting as a, just to get answers to those questions, so that's an option.
That's when it would be approved, then?
Yes, at the second.
At the follow-up meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. Sorry with me.
Sorry, I, I'm recovering from surgery. That's why I'm doing this weird configuration here, so I apologize for not just sitting up right. I, I'm concerned about the one budget meeting for the same reason that Counselor Grant said on, if somebody is not able to make that one meeting, then they're going to miss the whole stream. The, the other thing that I remember from last year, not only getting staff input and then having them come back to us, is having an opportunity to think about it. And kind of a gestation period where maybe people weren't able to come, but, you know, we can be talking, asking questions, what do you think about this? What do you think about that? What, you know, getting input, this is a longer period of time from the 7th to the 21st, that even if you had a follow-up meeting from the 17th to a follow-up meeting, that's a, the 7th to the 21st is a nice, long period of time to kind of have that gestation. I'd also want to hear from the rest of the budget committee how they feel about it. You know, like you said, the, the monkey survey thing. Just to hear, is this something that you would prefer, not prefer? You could make it, you can't make it, and, you know, people get sick, kids get, you know, so I just, I'm concerned about if you miss out on that one big meeting, you miss out on the whole nine yards. So that, that, that's my only concern.
And we would video it, correct?
Yes.
I like the fact that you're looking to get rid of the guesswork. The closer you can get to the number, the better I like it. It always bugged me that we were throwing in numbers and we're just grabbing them out of air and putting them out there, so. I like the Saturday option. I think if, if you do your job and encourage the budget committee, I think it'll work.
I'm certainly not opposed to trying something new, however, in order to make that work, I think we'd have to make sure that every member of the budget committee could be there. I also like the idea, Julie, you said of perhaps, I mean, there's, there's a lot of time difference between 5/17 and 6/17 on your option number one, that if we met and, you know, maybe got 90% of the work done, but still had some outstanding issues, we wanted to talk about, that we would have a, an additional meeting, obviously before 6/17, you know, bef, before we have a public hearing and we adopt the budget. Because I think that would be a long, you know, that's an entire month.
There are noticing requirements I have to do in between, so that's why, part of the reason I built in that leg time.
Right. But if you notice that we're having, you know, a follow-up meeting, I was just looking at the calendar, I mean, I, I don't know what's going on in May, that's too far out. 17th, so obviously we'd want to meet maybe again before Memorial Day weekend.
That would be my preference.
As a follow-up, and that wouldn't be a three-hour meeting, that might be an hour-long meeting.
Sorry, it sounds like at least there's, and I'm sorry, Councilor Langer, go ahead.
I was going to say, I think the survey monkey is a, a good idea, and I have the same concern about attendance, but it's not uncommon for one or two committee members. Sometimes it's a counselor that might miss a meeting. If in doing the survey monkey, somebody said, well, I can't get there till 9:00 or 10:00 AM, and, and I've got, it, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be relatively any different than a normal meeting if there was somebody that just missed a portion of the day. If somebody was going to miss the entire day, then that would be certainly different than we've experienced in the past, but I wouldn't want to throw out the whole idea just because, say, one person was going to maybe miss until lunch, because that wouldn't be an anomaly, so.
And can you put a couple dates in there, not just the 17th, maybe give a choice or two?
Yeah, we debated that at management team. The weekend before is Mother's Day, the weekend after is Memorial Day, so we're, we were running out of weekends.
We can ask the question, Mother's Day weekend, just in case, so. Survey monkey's an easy thing to do. So what I was going to say is, I'm hearing some interest in continuing to explore this. Let's talk to the budget committee. We'll be here next week with the budget committee. When, when would we need to decide as a committee which option we were going to do, Julie, if there was a?
In the next week or two, preferably, because it affects everybody else's, this schedule just shows the main components that affect the committee. I have a full-page schedule that is all the other milestones that we have to meet internally. So if we can make a decision in the next couple of weeks, maybe by the next council meeting, that would be perfect.
Okay.
Does that give you enough time? Okay, and we'll talk about it on Monday at the budget committee as well, and see what those folks can, can do.
I said, one thing to follow up, the whole idea of doing this is trying to encourage more public involvement, because we tend to get, just a tiny, if there's any way in the next week or two to reach out or make it available on the website for any public to make comments, or anybody here in the audience tonight, that'd be fruitful.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item we want to, it's probably going to take a little bit longer, medical marijuana dispensaries. So the council, if you're reading the papers or following some of the League of Oregon cities documents that you receive, you probably are aware that the world is going to change in Oregon in early March. And some cities are trying to be proactive in enacting certain regulations to either prevent or reduce the chances of having medical marijuana dispensaries within their boundaries. Captain Hanlon is probably our internal expert. He'll explain why he's an expert on this issue. Chris Crane from Berry, Elsner, and Hammond has been dealing with this in a number of jurisdictions. I think the Hillsborough approach is one that, for me, and I can go over that when the time is right, is an approach that I would ask you to consider taking, because, as I said, the world changes in Oregon on March 1st, and then it potentially will change again at the fall and with the ballot. So we wanted to get this in front of you, to have a discussion, and again, this is something where I'm looking and staff's looking from direction from you as policymakers, what do you want us to do, if anything, over the coming months, related to medical marijuana dispensaries? So, Ty, can you start? Sure.
Can I ask a clarifying question? I thought there were two initiatives on the May ballot.
No.
No?
I'll, I'll explain all the initiatives here in a moment. You want me to just start with House Bill 3460 and kind of what that means? Are you guys up to speed on that or where it's at?
Well, you can do it for the people who might be watching later.
Okay. So 3460 is a, was passed by the legislation, and essentially, March 3rd of this year, it will be legal in the state of Oregon to open up dispensaries.
We can't hear you, Ty.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll be able, state will be able to regulate and dispense medical marijuana through dispensaries to OMMP patients. There's, they're in draft four right now, I believe. That will probably be the final draft. I'll back up a little bit more as to my involvement. I'm on the Legislative Committee for the Oregon Associations of Chiefs of Police, and part of this, we spun off into another subcommittee to look at this and the impact it was going to have statewide, looking down the road with what Colorado and Washington have done, and, and where it may lead here in the state of Oregon. So that is my knowledge base. With 3460, as we're talking about, as cities are, are juggling how they're going to address this issue and when it comes here in the next couple of months. And so if you'd like to start with questions, if you want to understand a little bit more about how this is going to be spelled out as far as the regulations go, I'm more than happy to do that. Talk a little bit more about the initiatives that are on the ballot. There's actually three. I can talk about that in the, in a little bit if you'd like, but for now, if you just want to focus on 3460, I'm happy to do that.
So we don't have a choice?
Well, that's, that's not going, that's not going to be up to me in that sense, or what 3460 is, is it's coming, it's, it's going to happen. Now, the question is going to be how, how it's going to be done in each city and each county, and that's up to debate right now. I don't know if you want to speak a little bit more to that.
Along with that, Chris, I want to know, can we stop it if?
So let, let me give you the quick survey of the legal landscape and then tell you where we have come down as a firm on this. I was talking to Pam about this earlier today, and I don't know that it does, quote, preempt, end quote, local authority to regulate pursuant to your home rule authority. That said, Legislative Council has issued an opinion to the effect that it does, but I'd be willing to bet that we're far more expert in that subject than they are. There's also the question of, you know, are you required to permit a use that, on its face, violates federal law? Because marijuana is still a controlled, on the list of controlled, two, substance two list?
Actually, one.
Okay. Class one, controlled substances. But here's where we come down on it. Any jurisdiction that tries to ban this outright is begging for a lawsuit, and the medical marijuana community is very organized, very motivated, and it's going to be a fairly substantial legal battle with, with a lot of lawyers on all sides. So the question for you is, do you want to be the guinea pig? Or are there better ways to skin this cat? So can you ban it outright? I don't know. I think there are very good legal arguments that you can. That said, there are legal arguments on the other side as well, and the only one who's going to answer that question is the judge, or probably several judges up the ladder, all of which somebody's going to have to pay for. So there are a number of different, as I say, a number of different ways to skin this cat from a regulatory perspective. I was out in Happy Valley recently, and because of the way their city is laid out and the zones and so on, and the way 3460 is written, it says you have to, the, the use has to be cited in an industrial, commercial, mixed-use, or ag zone. Or not ant, right? So what they, the proposal there was, well, let's allow it as a use in our industrial zone, because theirs are way away from pretty much everything else, and because of the provisions in their development code, the improvements that would be required to put a use in out there would be so substantial that it's likely to scare away any small, you know, medical marijuana distributor. So they can go to the state and say, but, it's in our development code, we allow it. Anybody wants to put it right here, there's our industrial zone. They can demonstrate compliance with state law, but as a practical matter, it'll be a long time before you see one out there. So I talked to planning staff about this the other day, and Captain Handlon was on the line, and, you know, Sherwood's, sort of the facts on the ground in Sherwood and where your zoning is and so on, are different, and so it may not be that simple here, but there are other, you know, I guess my point is there are regulatory ways of addressing this to minimize, dramatically minimize the impact if you choose to go ahead and allow it in some fashion in Sherwood. But again, banning it outright is going to, to, you know, buy a lawsuit, and then you have to question, ask yourselves whether you're willing to pay that price.
And a couple of comments. Julie, Julia Haiduk has a map that kind of shows what parts of town are prohibited and where these might end up under the state 3460, so you can take a look.
Yeah, it actually doesn't say where it's prohibited, but one of the rules is that you can't be within a thousand feet of schools, and so we wanted to see what that would look like. I wouldn't get much from any of the commercial or industrial areas, if you're familiar with our layout, so.
Julie, does this include private schools as well, or just public?
I believe it is private schools as well, yes.
Oh, okay. Never mind.
Hey, Chris, do you think that the Hillsborough ordinance is going to stand up okay?
Yes. I think frankly, if anybody brought suit to challenge it, 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 good chance it would probably fail. That said, it's only for 120 days, right? In the first 30 days, you can't even get a medical marijuana, there, there's no registry to register for yet until March 1st. So let's say somebody submits their application on day one, on March 1st, it's still going to take the Oregon Health Authority 30, 60 days to process it. Then they come in to the city and they say, we've got our registration here, you, I want a permit to put medical marijuana shop over there, and he says, sorry, we don't allow it, and they file suit, before you even get a hearing, before a judge, before your responses even do it, the thing would, the moratorium, sorry, it's not a moratorium, but I don't know what they're calling it, but would have expired, and the lawsuit is moot. So as a practical matter, it, it's not worth somebody's time, and all the city is trying to do is buy itself more time to figure out the kind of regulatory response that I was talking about earlier.
It's a, they use the term temporary prohibition. And I passed out the Hillsborough staff report and ordinance, which actually is in front of their council tonight, I believe.
For the same, similar sort of discussion?
Yeah.
It gives us some breathing room, if nothing else. Do they, they're doing it now. I know that in some cities, the people who are growing the medical marijuana in cities, because you can, are dispensing it right out of their houses.
Probably, yeah.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's the only way they can do it now. They have listed, well, you can have up to 32 if you do it right.
Plant-wise? You can have six adults and 18 babies, if you want to call them that.
Yeah, but I mean, you can have 32 people getting it from you, or something like that. It's the way they permitted it.
No, you can only have, I believe it's only four patients.
Four patients?
Including yourself as a grower. So right now, Noma County is, obviously allows it, there's dispensaries all over that county that growers can provide marijuana to them, and then they'll dispense for you. The, the one thing about this that may slow the, the process down as well, there's, and the last I checked, and, and I don't know if it's the final number, but I believe it's a $4,000 application fee, and that is renewed every year. So anybody that's, has an interest in this, it's, it's just not going to be anybody, I mean, they're going to have to put some money out there to, to start this.
I think it costs $4,500 to have chickens. Can we raise the fee?
It's conditional use, yes.
Well, that's a one-time fee for 45, oh, okay, well, that makes it.
So you may recall, Tuolleton, a few months ago, was going down the route of approaching this as business license, and they were going to, because they were going to adopt language that would require business license applicants, this is my understanding, to comply with local, state, and federal law. And that's the route they were going to take. Obviously marijuana, as was stated, is still a violation of federal law, but as they started to dig into that, they really-- they started to dig into that, they really started to ask the question, which was a good one, when we review business license applications, are we going to be in the business of making sure every business license applicant complies with all local, state and federal laws? So think about that for a second in terms of ADA and labor laws and all that kind of stuff. The council said, whoa, wait a minute, that's a door we really don't want to open. Uh, so my understanding is they're probably going to do the same thing as Hillsborough. They're looking at it from a land use standpoint in terms of where to cite these. Um, so.
Will they have a bearing on, on where they grow it at all? I mean, right now, you guys don't even really know where, I mean, they don't have to report to the police that they have it grow and that's a big issue because people stumble on them and.
The way the dispensaries are set up is they can't be one and the same. So you can't have a dispensary and a grow site together.
Oh, that will eliminate that problem then, yeah.
Where they grow, yeah, is another issue.
And Ty, there's three initiatives that look like they're going to be signatures gathered over the summer that something could end up on the ballot in the fall?
Yeah, currently there's three on the ballot, uh, 21, 22 and 37. And so.
November ballot?
Correct.
Wow.
So those.
I'm sorry, they've already qualified for the ballot. They turned in the signatures and they're going to be on the ballot between now?
Uh, I know they've qualified with a minimum thousand signatures, at least on the two, and then they're on, they're on a standby right now as to, so 21 and 22 are, are together. 37, uh, is the most recent. Uh, with the session coming up, uh, they're going to wait and see what happens there and, and depending on the outcome of that, um, if legislation decides to take it on themselves, then these ballots will go away, but if they don't, then they'll go ahead and continue to gather the rest of the signatures needed.
Okay, so they're still gathering signatures?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And those are more in line, correct me if I'm wrong, of what we've seen in Washington State and Colorado?
Yes, and in particular, probably 37 is the closest that resembles, uh, Washington and a Colorado.
So Ty, real quick, I'm just trying to think this through. If I wanted to start my own dispensary, is it lucrative? Is, is it, they do this because they're making a lot of money by selling this or is it, why would I want to sell pot?
Well, in and of itself, it would be considered a business. Yeah, I mean, uh, the way that it's going to be set up is that they'll be able to sell marijuana to patients. So they'll be, so, uh, as a medical marijuana patient, you'll be able to come into this dispensary and, and buy whatever you need. And, and obviously those dispensaries are going to be buying from growers and I would presume at a wholesale price or, and just like any other business, selling it at retail.
But to come to Sherwood, they'd have to have a lot of people want to buy marijuana.
Well, currently right now, Oregon as of January 1st has 60,516 patients. So, uh, and in.
County, you had the Washington County number?
Washington County as of January 1 had 4,295. Uh, our neighboring Yam Hill has a thousand, Multnomah has 10,377 and Clackamas has 4,392. So surrounding us, there's plenty of patients out there.
If I may, Councilor Butterfield, um, House Bill 3460 includes, um, towards the end of section two, a discussion of the cost issue and how much money can be made. And it says basically a cardholder can reimburse the dispensary for, quote, "the normal and customary costs of doing business, including costs related to transferring, handling, securing, ensuring, testing, packaging and processing usable marijuana and so on, including the cost of supplies, utilities and rent and mortgage." So, and then there's another provision that says the same thing. It says the medical marijuana facility can reimburse the grower for those same kinds of costs. So it appears to suggest that you're allowed to sort of get reimbursement for the cost of doing business, but it begs the question of, okay, so what is your salary? Because that's, my salary is just part of the cost of doing business, not profit, right? If it's just personnel costs, so just pay yourself a lot of money.
On the business license recouping and part of the cost for doing business.
So, you know, on the face of it, they're prohibited from making profit, but, you know, it, it doesn't take very long to, to figure out how to, the hard tougher problem actually that you may have seen in a paper recently is these folks can't open bank accounts because bank accounts don't want their money.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Does it, does it make sense to go ahead and enact, uh, an ordinance like Hillsborough just to prevent something from happening between now and November? Uh, because as it is now with no ordinance at all, we could have applications coming in, right? I mean, we're not sure what we'd know what to do with them, right? Other than the waiting period that you're talking about, I mean, things could happen before November, right? If we do nothing.
Well, November is going to be separate. November is about legalization, recreational legalization.
Right.
Versus March is, uh, for dispensaries, which would dispense to patients. So.
So there's really no real reason to do anything before March because we're not going to get brick and mortar dispensaries before then anyway, right? Is that what I'm understanding you say? And so.
They can, they can apply in March to be a brick and mortar dispenser here.
So does it make sense for us to do something just to get, kind of jump on the bandwagon of this same ordinance so that if we see, since Hillsborough is ahead of us, we see how it plays out and we have it in place if it plays out well?
I think Mayor Middleton made a good point in terms of it buys us some time to kind of consider our options.
Right.
I think Hillsborough, instead of a thousand feet to schools, is thinking about 1,500 feet to schools. So it's like any other zoning or land use, you may have state minimums, but our community wants to be a high, have a higher bar. So by adopting a temporary prohibition like Hillsborough of four to six months, it allows you as the policymakers and the planning commission to do the actual ordinance and go through that process.
Yeah.
Um, and to see how things turn out next month in the legislature, because there's this ongoing debate whether cities can even, you know, regulate this, depending on which attorneys you believe. Um, so I, I think the mayor said it very well in terms of it buys us some time to think about some options instead of just kind of waiting to see what happens in other communities.
So what's the next step? The staff draft up an ordinance for next meeting?
If the consensus of the council is that they like the Hillsborough approach and they want us to adopt or some, put together an ordinance, we'll bring that back to you as quickly as possible. If you don't, we won't. So this is, this is really a policy question. We'll do what you want as a council.
So the dispensary initiatives that are on the March, when would those take effect?
The initiatives would.
Yeah.
So the initiatives in and of themselves are separate. Those are directed for recreational use. That'll be November. It'll probably be similar to Washington and Colorado. It wouldn't kick over till 2015 and, and legislation would have to do what they do. The dispensaries.
Because that, obviously if that passes, dispensaries will be.
Won't be worth it.
Yeah, I mean, the, the business model for a dispensary would essentially go away. I mean, and, I mean, I guess, I wouldn't know, but, um, so I have a question about if a dispensary sets up, you said they're limited to the number of patients they can distribute to who have a medical marijuana card, right?
No.
No.
So, uh, a grower who's specified by a patient can grow, uh, I believe it's, can grow for four patients.
That's the old law.
That's the current law.
Yeah.
And so what that means is for each patient they have, they can have six adults, 18 babies, so much dried marijuana, uh, and so forth. And so they dispense to their patients that they have.
Okay.
Uh, with a dispensary, it's, uh, it would be a brick and mortar location where any patient could come in or caregiver, uh, and buy marijuana for, for themselves or as a caregiver for their patients.
If, if it helps, we're talking about two pieces of legislation. The Oregon Medical Marijuana Act was passed like in '05 or something and that's been on the books since then and as a result, there are 65,000 plus people with medical marijuana cards out there. This sort of barnacles onto the side of that a, um, uh, dispensary piece. So if you're, just can't get it on your own and there's nobody around you to help grow it, you can go down to the dispensary and get your medical marijuana. So there's the Oregon Medical Marijuana Act itself that was adopted several years ago and then there's this dispensary piece that was just adopted and takes effect March 1st.
And the dispensary, are they required to service a regional area or an area or that anybody can come from anywhere and buy?
Correct.
Okay.
I think one of the driving forces behind it is that patients have not had a facility to go to. We've had the program, but everything has been, quote, under, on the black market as far as finding, you know, going out and trying to find this legitimately.
Okay.
Personally, I, I'd like to see you go ahead and draft the ordinance and bring it back to us. We can get some public input too at that time. So it gives us, like you say, it gives us some time to think because this is kind of all just coming right at us now, so.
Yes. And you're not alone. I think every city in Oregon is having this discussion with their councils. Um, would you like that as soon as possible? Okay. And then any sense of Hillsborough did, they thought four months? Any sense in terms of a prohibition time or should we make a recommendation and then you guys can discuss it after public input? Do you have any suggestion?
Would you have any legal advice on that or?
No, except I think you have to ask yourselves, um, you're buying time to do what exactly? And if you know what that is, then you'll know how much time you need. And Julie and I were sitting here, kibbishing, you know, you've got 35-day notice to LCDC because it's going to be land use regulations. You have to build in all these timelines, so, um, I'll let Julie answer that.
Uh, well, yeah, I think that we could certainly come back with a, this is what would be involved. Probably you'd want some, you know, a couple of public work sessions, you know, input at the planning commission level meetings, you know, so we can kind of build a schedule in and see how much time we think we need. I think 120 days may be on the, the short side, so we want to think about that. And then obviously we need to make sure that we, you know, have the, the time and resources available to, to carry it through that process.
Okay.
Do we still have Counsel Folsom?
Hey, that's a good question.
I haven't heard.
Counselor Folsom, are you still there?
I just thought I'd ask.
It's interconnected, but.
I'm, I'm here. I'm here. I just can't unmute very quickly, sorry.
Okay. Thank you.
So don't have to listen to JJ.
Thank you.
I just.
It's a great question.
We can leave that blank and, and fill in the date when you get a chance to look at it.
All right. Anything else before we move on? Thank you. The next ice item is one that I've had some discussion, uh, with Mayor Middleton on and I'd like to bring it to the entire council, um, this idea of doing a police staffing study, having someone, the company that does this around the country is a company called Matrix. There are other companies that do this. Um, I have some samples that I pulled up actually today, um, that I think are consistent with what the mayor was looking for. I want to certainly give him an opportunity to explain why he thinks this is necessary, how it would help us. And then a question of, do you want to proceed with this study because there'll be a cost that is currently not in the budget? So.
Do you have that form still that, that you sent to me?
I don't. I can get it for you though.
Well, yeah, we can pass it out later.
Yep.
The, what they do is they, they go in and take a department and they've done it, they, they're doing, the new ones are doing, uh, I think they're doing three in Washington coming up. They did Clackamas County, I believe. Um, they're doing two in southern Oregon. And they come in and, and look over the whole department to see where the actual needs are. They take the.
Just one report.
Take a matrix and they take crimes, they take all the mapping of where the crimes occurred, all your personnel, are you utilizing them right? Uh, do you have enough staff on this shift or too much staff on this shift? Because sometimes if you do it internally, you, you tend to, I don't know how to say, you jumble the facts sometimes to keep your staffing level high or it may be low. We don't know. That way, the study would cost money, but yet in the long run, it could save us a lot of money too. Because right now, much of our staff is on one shift. They may come in and they review it and say, with this crime, with this type of demographics of where your locations are, no, you can, and what they did on one department is they said, no, you don't need two detectives, you only need one. Put this one back in patrol. And they ended up saving the city about, in the total cost, overall savings was about $200,000. Another city they just did, they came back and said, no, you've got way too many doing this job and not enough doing this job. But they take the facts. They, they just strictly look at the facts of the crime, the time the crimes occur, what your current resources are. And it just gives a, a very good overall broad view of the future and what you're looking for. And so you can utilize it in, in many ways. You can say, well, you've got too much people doing the same job. And they take a lot of the departments and a lot of them are very heavy into clerical that use, like, that they're using sworn personnel for. And they say, don't do that. And then they take and say, okay, maybe this code enforcement's got way too much, so you bring somebody over in there. It just gives a good picture of the future of the department. And, and personally, my feeling is that we're a little top-heavy on the daytime and you need somebody to come in and really make a valued judgment on it. And that's, that's, it's the wave of the future. They're looking on it. It's a, they're doing it mainly in police right now and fire is, is their second. They're using it on fire too, to use the resources. We're not going to be able to continue to build, 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 build. You have to take what you have and utilize it in the most efficient manner possible. And it takes the guesswork out of it too. And it's, everybody likes to grow and that's just, that's not just the police, everybody likes to grow, but you have to make sure that growth is needed. And they take, and like you say, they use all the resources. And there's like three or four studies. I gave you one and.
One from Vernon.
Vernon, right. And it just, it's very, very informative and then it takes like, you don't have to come in and sell us on stuff. We know what the facts are and how we can use these resources. And, and I think it's very cost-effective in the long run to see how they do it. So you don't, a lot of times they'll say, well, we had 200 calls for service. Well, they'll break those calls down and see really what they were, because a lot of them are unnecessary, really tags of calls. They're, they just used a whole different method and that's what I'd like to see is, and I'd love to have had that when I was doing the chief job because then it gives you ideas of how to think outside the box and really utilize what you have. So because it, I think now we're staffed pretty good, but we just may need to move things around because oftentimes there's only two on certain shifts and there may be nine on another shift. So they tell you, no, you can utilize this, this, this and this. And that's what I'm looking for is cost efficiency and, and getting the most bang for our buck. So, and you have to read, you have to get a couple of the surveys to read because they really are informative when you start reading them.
That's my main push on it. I just like to see us, it give you a five-year future of what we're looking for. And, and I do have sample reports. Again, they tended to focus on the Matrix group because they're the biggest one nationally. Uh, but there's some valuable information in here and, and I think you, you get a sense kind of an outside expert came, coming in and taking a look at your department based on national standards and national trends and you take a look at, at how things are going. And it's an outside perspective rather than that inside-only perspective. Um, it's the biggest expense you spend money on, um, in the city. And most people would argue public safety is the number one thing that local government does. So it's not going to get any cheaper. Um, and I'm just looking for a green light basically from the council to move forward on it, knowing that there'll be a cost to it. Um, I did find out today, Des Moines, Washington did one and they're 29,000 people, so they're slightly bigger than us. Um, theirs was about $30,000.
Do they have dispatch in theirs?
Uh, no, but they had, they did a performance audit as well. So it was probably, I would think you're going to be in the 10 to $20,000 range to do this kind of study.
I'm, yeah, I'm not, I don't think we need the performance one so much. It's just, it's a staffing one is what I was looking at. The one I was looking at, Vernon, I think has dispatch and, uh, they were also doing a, a contract for another city. So they only had what, 200 and some people in it, less than that.
400 and some and.
But everything else is commercial, you know, so.
Mayor?
Hmm?
I'm sorry, I may have missed it, but why do we want to do this?
It gives you long-term plan on how you can staff your police department rather than then coming in and saying, we need five officers, but you can't really tell me why. This will specifically say because the crime is at this time, you have this much paperwork. You can do away with stuff.
can do away with stuff, too. They've eliminated, in some of these, they eliminated, one of them eliminated two command staff and put them back in. They kept them, but they put them on different schedules to be more, to help the crime reduction, too. They look at where your crimes are happening, the times, and they took a lot of stuff and said, you shouldn't be doing this as a lieutenant. That's something a civilian should be doing. You shouldn't be doing this as a sergeant. Somebody else should be doing this. They focused and said, well, we need more into traffic. They eliminated, a couple of them eliminated canines, because they're not cost-effective. And it's all about cost. How can you make sure the public's getting what they're paying for? And it may come back and say, hey, we can save some money here. Or we may come back and say, hey, you need three more officers. But I feel real comfortable if they come back with all the facts and say, here's why you need them. And they write, they tell you down the line, this is exactly why you need them. But it's very difficult when somebody comes and says, we need two officers, and you ask them why, and they can't give you a reason other than, we just need more bodies. It's like detectives. They take and see exactly what crimes they're working on, and they even matrix out what each crime should take time-wise as a standard. There's a standard, actually, of what crimes should take so long. And some of them, you shouldn't even investigate, shouldn't even bother with. But you respond to them, but you don't bother to, you know, you waste your time on stuff. And it's about efficiency, because the department is going to be our biggest expense. And I just want to make sure, and the chief works with them. They'll work together on it, and everybody comes up with a big happy smiley face at the end. But, I mean, it's not something to punish a department. It's something to give us a plan, much like Craig did with his maintenance. It's that kind of thing. It tells you out five years what we're going to need, rather than just kind of every year thinking, God, we need more people, but what for? You know, so.
Okay.
That's, I mean, I just think it's a long-term tool that I'd love to see us use.
And one of the reasons I'm...
And also the public, too, would also feel more comfortable.
And one of the reasons I bring this up now is, in talking with the mayor, he'd like to get going on this now and not wait until...
Might have to budget it next year.
And not wait necessarily until we go through the budget process and put everything together.
Because it could save us money.
It could save us money.
Right.
Well, generally, something like this, I would expect the department heads to come ask for. So, what's the chief think of this? Does he bring this to us, or where's this coming from?
Unfortunately, Chief Growth is sick. That's why he's not here tonight.
No, it's not normally the chiefs that do bring this. Normally, the councils and the administration, because they want, I mean, what do you think the chief's going to say? Out, we'll cut two positions because we don't need them? No. I mean, they're worried about getting their people, and that's fine. But you need an outside, to me, and this is what they're going to now, an outside evaluation of how you do business. Are you doing it the best, the most cost-effective, and what else for the citizens? It gives the citizens a feeling, too, that, yeah, you've really taken a look and seen what, how we're spending the money. Fire departments do it all the time.
Well, last year, during the budget process, didn't we all kind of decide if we had the money, we would add an officer?
But what for?
I thought we, back then, I thought we discussed that we had determined that we needed it. I don't remember all the details.
Why? That was part of it. We never really, I didn't think we ever really got responses to why.
It was clear to me.
Okay. What was it, then? Why?
It was because we were under patrol.
Why? I mean, our crime rate's very low. Wouldn't you think maybe they could take some of those other positions and put them into patrol, rather than into special details?
To answer your question, Mayor, I don't find myself in the position to micromanage his job. But he did make his case very well last year. I don't want to paraphrase his reasons of why from, on a day-to-day basis. But it was clear to me that we had reliable information from the chief at that time. And if he, I mean, if he comes to us in budget and wants to spend this money on this and sees the benefit for it, you know, I think it'd be a great thing for the whole budget committee to weigh in. But I don't want the chief living in a fishbowl instead of the other things that he needs to be doing. I just, I'm not seeing the need for this.
Well, I don't think it's living in a fishbowl. I think it's being progressive. You're not spending, we're spending taxpayers' money for that police department. I kind of think, myself, if you read the newspaper, what do you have, maybe six or eight calls a week? And they're all pretty low-level. Maybe we could take some of our resources that we use on our day shift and put them on nights. It's not micromanaging. It's taking the citizens' money and spending it properly. And it's not micromanaging. It's doing something progressive, thinking outside the box, how we're going to continue on down the line. You say, we need another patrolman. What for? That's, I guess I just don't understand. If you're not responding to calls, you've got eight people on day shift. Why? I mean, the dog, how many times have we used that? You know?
I guess what I'm thinking is, I, I mean, I understand. I hear what you're saying, just we've never talked about it before. And normally, before we go spend a bunch of money on a study, there's some discussion, like a work session, and the department head is involved in it, and we figure out a plan and what we're going to do with it. Like, when we decided last year during our meeting of this nature, which was our strategic planning, our goal-setting session, we talked about that we wanted a police dog. And so, that was one of the things that ended up on our priority list, so we went and did it. This is just the first time we've come up with it. Like, the police dog, we had talked about that not only at that meeting, but before that. We talked about it after that. Then we decided we're going to do it, and we did it. I'd just like to talk about it a little bit more. First time I've ever heard about anything like this. And so, it's a little bit of a learning experience, and without having the chief here to bounce a bunch of questions off of him.
That's fine. And I have no problem. If the police department gives us the actual calls that they do and not, you know, statistics can be used any way, but facts are what you deal with. And my main thing is, if you come back every year and ask for a person, tell me why. I mean...
Well, let's get some of those statistics and judge them for ourselves and see if we don't think we're getting a right and enough data for them to be making their own decisions, then maybe that justifies that we need a study. I mean, otherwise, I don't know how you determine that you, that we're not making the right decisions.
Well, the thing is, I guess, I guess I'm looking at it from a different perspective, since I had more than 35 years in law enforcement. It may be a little different perspective when I see that I think we're jacking the statistics. I really do. When you say, we're doing this, we're doing this, we're doing this. Is it necessary for all those things to be done?
As I'm saying, then show me this.
Our main thing is crime reduction.
I'm just saying, then show me those statistics.
Show them. That's fine. Show us factually. And that's, if I could get on the statistics, I'm good with it.
Yeah. Put them in front of me. Show me how they're being jacked around. That's, to me, then that would be the justification that we need a legitimate study. Otherwise, I...
Done?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I mean, since this is, I mean, this is a work session. So, I mean, that's why we are talking about it. I actually had a question, since in work session, if, a lot of people haven't watched our work sessions before, a lot of times, we kind of bounce back and forth. It's not, it's not the same kind of protocol as when we have a regular council session. But I actually had a question for you, Council President Henderson, because you'd said that you read the Mount Vernon report. And since the rest of us haven't had the exposure to that, you know, like you said, this is kind of new. We haven't, you know, you've got a stack there. It sounds to me like Joe thinks that there's some merit in having an outsider look at something from the inside, having nothing to do with saying that there's something not correct with the police department.
It's not saying it's not correct.
Right. Because I think that, I mean, I have spoken with police officers, many different police officers, and one of the reasons that our streets are safe is because they're out there. And they're making public contact during the day and night, and they're in the schools, and they're visible, and they're positive influences. So, I was wondering, with all of those components built in as well, not just looking at, you know, the patrol goes here, or the detective goes there, did you think that the report that you read was kind of inclusive of all of the components that make a city safe? Or did it just look at sort of the numbers and run the numbers as to, all right, so we got this many calls on 911 kids dialing, and that's going to take so many officers, that kind of thing?
Yeah. The Mount, the Vernon, California, report that the mayor had printed off and shared with me is kind of like comparing an apple and an orange. The, this town in California has 400 residents and 1,000 businesses. So, it really, I, the report, you know, does just take data. Basically, they analyze data in the same way all of our staff take data and analyze it. I don't know what models they use, and that was a question I had, is that, you know, we often hear about the number of officers, how we compare nationally or locally per thousand. And that's a national standard that somebody came up with at some point in time, and I don't know when. Obviously, Matrix must employ people who have expertise in law enforcement, or retired, or military, or something. But I don't know what model they come up with. In the Mount, in the Vernon, California one, they determined that they were wholly understaffed for dispatch. So, they actually added three dispatchers. And that's, obviously, we don't have dispatch. But as the mayor mentioned, you know, that's a whole nother aspect, and we already have WACA, so we don't have to worry about that. But I would definitely be interested in the Des Moines, Washington one, where they spent 30,000.
Yeah.
Yeah. What did they get for their 30,000? You know, and how long it took, and how disruptive it was necessarily for, it's kind of like an audit. When the audit comes in, I mean, you can ask Julie, when the auditors are here, there's a lot of other work that's not getting done.
Right.
And so, but that's, that's a function of wanting to have, if you're going to do something, then let's do it well. You know, let's have the data. But more, and I don't know if there, this is obviously something we would send out for an RFP, right?
Yes.
Given the amount of money that we're spending. So, it might be another company other than Matrix that might have, you know, do similar work, but might have different models. And there may be other people who focus more on a, you know, residential or metropolitan area versus, you know, smaller or more rural areas, like if you were trying to, you know, look at a sheriff situation. Like you said, Clackamas County, Clackamas County has a very large, you know, area that they patrol. So, the report was very objective, I think. I mean, it's been a while since I read it, but, you know, they basically took a look at, you know, where their staffing was, and then make recommendations. They didn't move patrol officers into dispatch, obviously. They just recommended hiring three more dispatchers. But it was a heavily industrialized area, so their calls are, you know, really different than what, than what we have. They're not really, you know, they're not patrolling a town of 19,000. They're patrolling a town of 400 that has a lot of people who come and go all day long, going back and forth to work.
Did they do one in Patterson, California, and now Ontario's thinking of doing one there now?
And the two that I have, that I will make copies available to the council...
Yeah, they're very long, by the way. They're like...
Are more similar to this community.
Yeah.
So, my sense from hearing this discussion is there's interest. You want to learn more. I can get you that. I need to find out more in terms of what some of these things cost. There is a draft RFP or scope of work that I put together that the mayor saw initially, and he thought it was heading in the right direction. I can share that with you. We can keep this moving forward and have another work session very soon in terms of whether we want to do it right away, or should it be in the budget as part of next year's work plan.
Joe, can you ask those other cities what the driving force was behind, why they decided to do it?
Yeah, I can look into that. I think the mayor hit the nail on the head. I mean, I will do that. But when you think about the expense of law enforcement, it's your biggest expense. And you want to spend taxpayer dollars wisely. And this is an outside expertise, kind of looking at your department and saying, yeah, you're understaffed. We may find out we're understaffed in some areas.
Right. Absolutely.
And it gives you an outside set of eyes. So, I think there is some value in this. We just need to ask the right question and know what those questions are before we jump in. And you make a great point in terms of disruption, Council President Henderson, because I don't know how disruptive they are. Do you know?
They use mostly stats.
Yep.
And then they do talk to people. But it's mainly, it's like an outside audit, is what it is.
Yep.
And we audit our finances every year. And it just, I mean, you know, there's nothing saying the police department's doing wrong. It's just maybe they could do it better for less, or it might cost us more. But if it costs us more, we can justify it, too. So...
One of the things that I've seen some jurisdictions do, and I'm not suggesting this in Sherwood, but if you ever go out for a levy for some type of additional services in law enforcement, and people, you know, are taxed pretty high already, they're going to ask, why do we need it? The same questions that you're asking, Mayor.
And it might be a good...
And this, at least, is someone from the outside coming in and saying, you need it for these reasons, versus just the chief arguing in for it, or the city manager arguing for it. So, in a way, it can be very helpful as you look toward the future.
We have talked about maybe having to do a levy someday, so...
Yeah. So, does it sound like this will be a continuing discussion, and I'll get you more information?
Work session?
Yeah. And I'd like to talk to you, what the chief says about it.
Yeah. And I'm sorry he's not here.
Oh, we understand that.
He's got a really bad cold today, so...
Sure. Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. Mayor, did you want to continue, or did you want to take a short break at all?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Yes.
If she wants, she's okay with that.
You can thank me for that.
Okay.
Okay, let's, we're going to go ahead and start again.
Come back in here, would you please? So, are you going down to supervise these guys tonight, or take equipment, or?
No, he's got to be with them. They're working on...
Is that the boat right on the water?
Yeah.
Right where the boat launch is? Yeah, we've spent a lot of time down there.
It's the only place you can still take your tree trimming stuff.
Yep.
They're making toilet paper for the Chinese.
Good. Out of my armpit, I didn't think that.
There you go.
Mayor Bolton, she has a hard time carrying her people and talking into their minds.
Okay. How close is she?
Robin, 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 Robin.
Yeah.
She in there, on there?
I can actually hear the mayor pretty well.
Okay.
Can you hear me, Robin?
I can hear you.
That's because he has a cold.
Are they sleeping?
A little.
Okay, the next is with the city manager. Review and update of council priorities.
Here he comes.
Oh.
Tell him to zip up his pants.
So, I sent this document that Sylvia is passing around to you last week. It's a summary of your goals and then the priorities under those goals in terms of current status. And I'm, and staff are here to answer any questions on any of the current priorities in terms of getting those accomplished before June 30th. Then, I want to ask the question, two questions of council. Is anything on this list that's not been initiated, need to come off the list? And then, the second question, is there anything that needs to be added to the list? And what we're looking for in terms of timeframe is from, this is work, priority projects, the council wants to see the staff get accomplished between now and the end of next fiscal year, which would be June 30th, 2015. So, basically, the next 18 months. So, if we can open it up for any questions on what you have in front of you. Counselor Butterfield looks like he has a question or a comment.
The comment is the lighting project at Edie Ridge. Is it on here?
It is not identified on here. So, if you wanted to see that added...
I would like to see it added.
And I'm assuming you're talking about lighting at Edie Ridge, at the Ridge's campus, and then also at the Hopkins Sherwood Middle School campus?
That's correct.
That we've been talking about?
Yes.
Other counselors agree with that?
Do we talk about that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. This does not mean, this, these are your top projects. These are not everything we do. So, there are things that are not on here that we're going to get done. If it's on this list, it's a priority of this council. And that's what we're looking for in terms of staff, to make sure we've got the right priorities in terms of projects. And as we start to plan the budget, especially if it's a project that's, that's not going to really start until next fiscal year, that it gets on this list. There may be some projects on here that came out of last year's discussion that you don't feel is necessary anymore. I'll tell you one that I would throw out there is the idea of researching a park and rec district. We have not gotten to that.
Well, I think for the next few years, as long as Counsel Butterfield's here, we might as well... might as well pull it off. It's not a priority right now, we've got too much stuff. Do you want to pull that one off?
Yes.
And this 2.4 on infrastructure, I think that's up to the charter committee.
Mayor, I think you've made the suggestion, and others, including that in the charter, that's certainly one route to take. We could also do it as an ordinance, or a resolution, and create that board, and it would not have to be in the charter. We could do that sooner, but then you wouldn't have that solid, it's in the local constitution that we have a board.
I'd rather have it in the charter, wouldn't you? I mean, see if they even want to do it or not.
I mean, we don't have any other board or commission in the charter, but obviously, we have a significant investment in this water system. What kind of, what did you envision the Water Board to be comprised of? Citizens, as well as?
Right.
A representative from TBWD, or any of our other partners?
I think there was two cities in, the ones you gave me that had it, that had, I think Oregon City, and I think.
West Lynn has it actually in their charter.
West Lynn, yeah.
That's why I read it was in the charter.
It's actually in the charter in West Lynn.
And what does the charter say as far as?
The makeup of it?
Yeah, I mean.
Council President, if I may.
Sure.
I also serve as council to what's called the South Fork Water Board, that was created in about 1917, 1918, as a consequence of, I believe it was a cholera outbreak. So it's been in existence for a long time. It is essentially, effectively, and legally, the combined water departments of Oregon City and West Lynn, and serves both of them through an individual, a single intake on the Clackamas River. The treatment plant is in Oregon City, and water is piped to both cities, obviously to West Lynn across the Willamette. So it's been there for a very long time, 100 years now, and so I think it is in the charter largely out of recognition of the fact that that's where they get their water from. It certainly, the South Fork Water Board preceded the incorporation of the city of West Lynn by many decades.
Right.
So I think it's there to recognize the existence of South Fork as the city's water provider, and the board of the South Fork Water Board is comprised of six city councilors, three from West Lynn, and three from Oregon City, and they meet once a month and make water decisions.
It's a board of elected officials.
That's right, it's a combined board, right, it's a board made up of elected officials from both of the cities. And again, they treat it very much like a combined water department.
Yeah, I don't think that's what we were looking so much for. We were looking for much, much like a rec group, where our representative from the Water Board could meet with them. Then it gives more citizen involvement, and they can get all their questions answered, and actually bring it out to the public, and it widens the view. And if people have a better understanding, I think they would have a lot of their questions answered, much like what we have on the rec board. We determine what's going on, what we're going to plan for, for the future, things of that nature, not so much like you're looking at.
Hills, are you familiar, Chris, with Hillsborough's?
Hillsborough has a utility commission.
Yeah.
Right, a utility commission that oversees city utilities. And I don't know, Hillsborough provides water, and I don't know what else. For example, Forest Grove has its own power and light. Yeah, but I don't think they treat fire as a utility.
Like a utility, yeah.
But Forest Grove has its own power and light, Hillsborough may, as far as I know. Sherwood has broadband, I would categorize that as a telecommunit, again, I don't know what, what, what am I thinking, utilities Hillsborough provides that fall under the purview of that utility commission. But yeah, it's an unusual structure that frankly, none of us have seen anywhere else that's unique to Hillsborough. But that commission does have fairly substantial authority to approve projects and contracts and so on, and if you're creating a separate entity, you'd want to think carefully, obviously, about what powers you're vesting in this entity.
Right. I'd use it more as an informational group, that, I guess what I'm looking at is it would open up to the public a chance to sit on the board, know where we're going, much like the other groups recommend, they don't have the power to enforce, or to make it up, anything like that. They give us recommendations, and I think it would be, water has been a huge issue in this town, and if we could bring some of the public in, have the person that's going to the water meetings, and maybe broadband would be a great one, too, because it's kind of, I don't really don't know what's going on with that. It would just empower the public to know what's going on. I mean, if it's worth it, fine, if it's not, it's just something I'd like to see, to have more citizen involvement.
And Mayor, we're pretty much ready, we're ready to start bringing that discussion in a work session to the council, and try to get something accomplished before the end of this fiscal year. Now, you've raised the topic of maybe it should be in the charter, so we can still have that discussion, and you guys can make suggestions.
No, we don't have to, because I did, now that he explained what their charter, because if you read it in the charter, it just sounds like, the one in Oregon City actually sets the rates. You can't go above 3%, isn't that it?
Yeah, so that's interesting, because South Fork, as the water provider, sets its rates, much like your Public Works Department sets water rates here. But the people always obviously reserve to themselves the initiative and referendum power, and they added a provision to the charter that says they can't go up by more than 3% a year. Fortunately, what they do is raise them by about 3% a year, and therefore head off any of the sort of, once every six or seven year, 30% increases that you've seen in some jurisdictions. So they build that into their rate structure, and almost as an escalator, an annual escalator, and they're able to stay within their costs and still stay within the charter limitation.
It would stop the big jump.
So it sounds like we want to consider maybe adding code that creates a water advisory board?
Yes.
Of some kind?
Yes.
And it would function, you know, with a liaison, and people would apply, and?
And I think what I'm hearing from the mayor last year, and certainly tonight, is it provides an opportunity for more citizens to get involved with something that has been an issue in this community for a number of years, and people feel it in their pocketbook.
I know, just the guy to serve as the staff liaison, too. Because he's been with us virtually from the entire process, so.
And we have a built-in person on the council with the water, too.
I appreciate that, and I like the idea of more information, because certainly a lot of people still ask questions about water that we thought we'd spread out, and then it surprises us, because we think, oh, gosh, I thought everybody understood that, and it's always good to have more information. I like the idea. My only, the only thing I think we should think carefully about as we progress is that a lot of citizens who join a board, whether it's the Budget Committee, or the Cultural Arts, or whatever, are looking forward to action items.
Right.
On their desk, you know, in front of them, you know. And so as I was thinking about this, I was thinking, okay, what action items would we put in front of the Water Board? And so that they not only felt that they were being informed, but also felt empowered to be a part of decision-making moving forward. And we really, even as a council, haven't made a lot, in the last couple of years, a lot of water-related action items, even that have been brought before us. I mean, certainly, years before that, we made a lot of decisions, you know, but more recently, there really hadn't been a lot of things that we've done, that we've had to say yes or no to anything, that we would say, well, boy, let's put this to the board and get their advisory first, and then come back to us. So, you know, I like the idea, I just wanted to make sure that we have a clear understanding of what we would put to them as action items.
I'm not sure that they, I don't know if my mic's on, if they would need to meet every month, maybe every other month?
Could be every other month or quarterly.
Or maybe once a quarter, depending upon, but I think a lot of citizens would be interested, because they don't necessarily understand the whole picture. And as the mayor put, you know, water has been, you know, an ongoing, very large investment for our city, but as everybody's reading the paper, water's an issue for everybody. I mean, Hillsborough's thinking about building an $800 million transmission line from Wilsonville to Hillsborough. Tiger doesn't have the amount of water they need, like Oswego doesn't have the amount of water that they need. And I think people would learn a lot, just by understanding the history, and where we are, where we've come from, how we paid for it, how we're paying it off, how rates apply. And, you know, we're lucky in that we control our own destiny with respect to water, but it's still a utility that will have to be updated, rates will have to be looked at, investments will have to be made, so.
Yeah. And the one thing that, I've been going to those boards up at Metro, and there are a lot of information that we need to get out, and so that's my thing. They're not going to make a lot of solid decisions on any of this, because, but it would give them a heads up of what's coming, and it'd give us an open forum. Anybody from the public could come, too, and sit and listen, and ask questions.
I actually think there would be quite a few action plans. I mean, I've had discussions with the Wilsonville mayor, and the Hillsborough mayor, and I think that regional planning could be part of the things that you talk about. You know, what are we looking at?
I meant action items, the questions you would put for them.
Right, but what are we looking at as municipality in the relationship to us, to our neighbors? You know, what's the grand plan here for water in the future? I think that you come up with several action plans. I think it'd be, I think it'd be pretty exciting.
Well, I'm hearing, let's keep it on there, and let's get it going, and get it done. Get something in front of you in the next month or two, and see if it fits what the council wants, and then create the board. I believe you can probably do it through resolution, Sylvia?
Or ordinance. Or ordinance, if you want.
So.
Yeah.
Same question, we discussed the potential for item 4.1, which is a public safety advisory board. Does the council?
I don't know anything about, what would that entail?
The cities that I'm familiar with that have public safety advisory boards, again, it goes back to our discussion about the Matrix study, the biggest expense we have is on public safety. And as you're making important choices in terms of your police and public safety needs, or emergency management, you'd have citizen involvement in those issues. As an advisory committee, to you, the council, in terms of making decisions. There's certainly citizens that they have a passion or an interest for public safety, and that's what they want to get involved with, and I've seen it succeed in other communities. It is not a citizen review board, where you're, you know, reviewing how officers did or didn't do their jobs properly. That's not what we're proposing. This is more, again, one of the biggest expenses that the city spends money on, you have more citizen involvement in terms of planning for the future. Councilor Clark?
Since this would be, oh, sorry, since this would be a citizen committee, would this be something that CERT would be involved with?
Yep, because public safety is a broad spectrum. I mean, we tend to think about police, but certainly, fire's part of that, and emergency management, and citizen volunteer programs like CERT, or some other things, so. Again, it's another opportunity to get input from your citizens, and to get more people involved to help you reach good decisions.
Who brought this forward?
It was part of your retreat last year, actually, and I don't really remember.
Yeah, with the police chief was in?
Yeah, Chief Gross is supportive of it.
Okay.
Might have been my idea, but I don't really remember.
His big concern was he didn't want it to be a citizen review board.
No, it's not like the Portland one.
It's not an oversight.
No, it's not an oversight.
It would be the same thing, which is giving citizens some access to staff, and planning, and projects, and.
That'd be helpful at budget time, if the committee could come back and say, hey, this is what we've discussed, this is what we need, and it's open to the public, so I have no problem with it.
Exactly, okay. Anything else? Councilor Ling, or?
I was, item 3.3, formulate a future annexation plan strategy, can you tell us what that's all about?
Well, I think when we discussed that last year, we had not initiated that. We knew Brookman was kind of on the horizon, potentially. Obviously, Brookman failed at the ballot box, but I'm hearing that it may come back. We have areas that are going to be studied in the next few years. Sherwood West is going to be studied in terms of that area, that's the area west of Elworth. We got the Metro grant. Julia's come up here to talk about this a little bit. I guess the question, how would this benefit you and your department, Julia, if we had a more defined annexation strategy or plan?
Well, first, I just want to touch on what it would be, and I think what the discussion was at the last goal-setting meeting, and the idea is that to identify what, as a strategy, what we, as a community, can accommodate and when, so we make sure that we're metering the growth over time. And I would envision, we received a grant to do the high-level concept plan for Sherwood West, and part of that is identifying the appropriate phasing, so that, you know, we don't bring in that whole area all at once, we know that really can't be done, and shouldn't be done for our community. So I would envision that an annexation strategy would take that as a first piece, but then also look at all of the urban reserve areas, just so we're identifying how we want to make sure that we're metering over the long term, you know, concept planning, annexations, and things like that.
And we haven't started that work yet, so we can keep it on your priority list if you want to see that next step taken in the next 18 months. If you don't believe that that rises to the level, then it can be taken off.
What do you think?
Well, just to clarify, I mean, I think it's certainly something that would help both the community development and planning staff, as well as council at regional meetings, have an idea of what it is that we want to ask for, or want to ask not for, as Metro looks at urban growth boundary expansions, urban reserve area expansions, as you consider annexation. So it certainly would be helpful, at the very least, clarifying, if not the whole city, but at least, you know, just, we're going to be working on the Sherwood West concept plan, and part of that is going to be an annexation strategy. Whether or not you have that, you know, as a high priority on your priority list or not, is something we will be working on, because we need to be doing that for the grant, and to plan for that area over time, so.
It's not like it's going to be done anyway.
Yeah.
So when you start working on the Sherwood West plan, that is through the Planning Commission?
Certainly as a part, it would be just like any other concept planning process, where there will most likely be citizen advisory, stakeholder advisory committee members, technical advisory committee, planning commission, and ultimately, council would weigh in, and we would involve the community quite extensively, because it's a pretty, you know, it's a very large area that we would be planning for, and we'd want to make sure that we've got a lot of community involvement as we identify the long term. And again, as a reminder, the urban reserve area is a 50-year supply of land for the region, and so we don't think it's going to happen in the next, you know, 10 years that that whole area would come in. So it's really something that we need to look at, at a community level and a high level.
Right. And how long do you think that process will take?
About a year and a half to go through that planning process.
18 months, okay.
And we have not begun it yet.
Right.
So again, if it drops off this list, it doesn't mean it's not going to get done? Just, these are the things, from our perspective, and the communities, that's important to you as a council, as you currently exist. These are the things you expect us to get done, and want us to get done.
Well, I say leave it on, and just put it as ongoing, if you're going to be doing it anyway, I mean.
Okay, is he head nuts? Any other questions?
So I had a question on, too, infrastructure, under the 2.6, develop future operations for senior center. So I know we did the remodel, but we've had some additional input from citizens that we don't have a plan, there's no plan in place for the senior center. I think that was really sort of an ongoing maintenance and/or slash operations. Does that need to be another line item, since that's got green here?
Well, when I say short-term solution, we've got a two-year reprieve in terms of the operations.
Right.
Where loaves and fishes has basically, you haven't said yes yet, but it's on the horizon, to basically extend the current operational plan for two more years. When we were looking at this last year, that was unclear. We thought that maybe they would not want to renew. So they've renewed, or it looks like we're going to renew, that's why I'm saying it's a short-term solution. But we still haven't figured out, long-term, what we're going to do with the center, in terms of not just maintenance, but possible expansion, as the seniors become more common in our community. Do we want to take that back and operate it ourselves? What does that look like? So that's why I think it's still an ongoing issue. We've got a two-year reprieve, that it's not immediate, but it can't drop off the radar.
Well, I would rather than say we have a two-year reprieve, I mean, I think. Well, I would rather than say we have a two-year reprieve. I mean, I think that there are issues that are on, you know, I've heard testimony of, you know, the briar patches still being, you know, the connecting land, I mean, the cobbled steps. I just think that there are issues there that we could be talking about. And I don't, I don't hear the senior center coming up a lot, and I guess I'd like to. I'd like to hear more.
So keeping it on there to address some of these things
Right.
and having staff come and have those discussions with council in a work session.
Yeah, have the director come and.
Sure.
Yeah, I think I would feel good about that because I feel like I haven't heard a lot from that area. And I want to make sure that we are addressing.
Well, and we made, we just made the investment with the federal dollars in terms of the renovation. And if you look at demographics, we're going to have more and more seniors. So the services that are provided at that center are going to become more and more important to the community.
Well, and as Robin will attest, it's, the center itself serves all of the community.
Yes.
So, I mean, I would like to make sure that there is a plan for the senior operation, but also for the facility.
And the other thing you have not seen yet in the senior center is one piece of the puzzle. Craig Sheldon's been working on a facilities plan for all our facilities, which includes the senior center.
Okay.
So it's coming. We just haven't quite got there yet.
Because that was my second question under the same, I think it's under the same infrastructure, is I didn't see anything under here on the recreational facility. So are we going to be making sure that that has an operation schedule?
We can add specificity to this that's not on here. It wasn't on there last year. I think that's a very good point in terms of the work that's being done currently and moving forward. The 20-year agreement's going to end. It's on the horizon. We have a decision to make. So are you proposing a specific language addition?
I don't know.
Or would you like, need to craft something and bring it back?
Yeah, I think that would be helpful. I don't know if you want to, you know, talk about, you know, contract maintenance or facility. I don't know how you want to craft it, but you craft it as to, you know, we're coming upon a deadline that we don't want to hit the deadline and be like, oh, what are we supposed to do now?
Exactly.
I mean, we need to be watching out for that. That's the whole point of the forecasting.
Okay, I will add that.
I have one other, and I'm not sure how you would go about doing this, but the senior center is utilized by many, many different groups in the community. And I would be interested in learning from them, you know, their happiness, unhappiness, you know, any concerns they have with using the building. I mean, they might, I know my son's there every Monday night for Boy Scouts and I think it works fine for them, but I'd kind of like to see some feedback if maybe the director could solicit some feedback for some of the groups who use the facility as to, you know, if they had a wish list, what would be on their wish list? And because that's a heavily used, you know, facility and, but it's not a young facility too. It's 27 years old, I think, or 28 years old. So, and I know that that's, that we have a partnership with Mills on Wheels who use the building. Think of its current condition or current amenities.
Okay.
So.
And there may be less usage with the new building.
Well, there will be adjustment, yes.
And also, somebody who's been in and out of the facility, she reports it in a week. I have to say, I've been going to the senior center for 17 years and I really appreciate the director that's there right now and the opening, the way that she and the seniors who volunteer there are open there on the rest of the community. They're very professional and they do a great job of making sure that the senior activities are taken care of. But if the facility is available for the community, that it's available. We found that, I think it speaks to what the city has taken on with too, that cleanliness of the facility is very good. And it's the renovation that just happened is much appreciated. The only concern that I've had as a liaison to the senior center board and then I also attend the friends of the Sherwood Senior Center they have had some theft of some of their equipment.
Really?
So it, you know, we've talked about different ways of making sure that everything is locked up. I mean, other groups might be in there using it or something like that. But those are really the old concerns that I heard, so.
Okay.
It's a great facility. I think, I think it was Councilor Clark that mentioned that, you know, and you too, we have a few reprieves, but we need to keep the conversation going because really when we look at the senior center, it looks like a part of a greater whole, which is our whole community and the facilities we have. So I know later in the presentation Craig is going to talk to us about, you know, the maintenance issues that we face with those types of facilities. And I just wonder if we just kind of step back and look at everything as a whole picture, maybe there's a way to discuss a mechanism or something that can help provide support to the facilities that the city owns and less maintains and make sure we don't kick the can down the road about the maintenance.
Too far.
Like what Clark referred to before. We need to make sure, we're trying to look at ways now before we get behind the 10-year ball again. But I have really appreciated the support of the senior center. And they have a very active and vibrant group of seniors who have probably worked from them or sometimes part from them. No stress that they provide the senior senior active lead, all the kind of daily basis. They try to reach out more to the older men in the community because they've got a lot of activities and they're doing that now. So I apologize for being, maybe been bringing those things up under council comments because that's the feedback that I have as the liaison to senior center.
Thank you.
Can we change something to allow a few maintenance goats to take care of the blackberry problem?
Yeah, go get the porcupines.
Hey, get their goats.
Anything else on this topic for tonight?
About 5.1. Initiate neighborhood social events. I see it hadn't been initiated yet. Is that something we're going to work on or is that something that needs to come off the list?
Again, I think when we talked about that last year was before Wal-Mart and everything kind of happened and we never got to it last summer. The idea is still, I think, very valid in terms of whether you want to do some activities during the summer and get out into the parks and not necessarily require people to engage with you here in this building. That was the idea.
Kind of like the staff barbecue we do up at Snyder Park.
We had the idea of maybe two or three barbecues around town. So council and staff could go to a park and citizens could come and on a nice summer evening engage, you know, have a hot dog and chips and things like that, but also engage their elected officials in their neighborhoods rather than coming here. You know, we did this in Beaverton. You may recall I was part of that. We did it in Fairview. It can be quite successful. We never got to it last summer because of everything that was going on. So that's why it was on the list. And if you're interested in doing that, we can make that happen this summer.
Yeah, because we could advertise it to the HOAs.
Yes.
Quite a ways out. I know that Woodhaven has a big Fourth of July parade and all that. I know that's not the best time for everybody, but that might be a good time for some of us to meet with them because that brings out a lot of people.
Yep. My experience with these and other communities is that you hear from citizens that normally you wouldn't hear from because you're in their neighborhood, you're in their park. It's a great, you know, Oregon summer night and hey, a lot of moms would come and say, hey, I don't have to cook tonight. I can have a hot dog for my kids. They can play on the play structure and I can sit and talk to the mayor and council and staffs here. So they've been very successful in other communities and I think they'd be successful here as well.
Sounds like we ought to get a couple on the calendar.
We used to do something like this, didn't we? I know there was.
Couple of times.
Was that just for the opening of Snyder Park or did we do that for a couple of years in a row?
We did it for the opening and then we did it for the summer solstice.
Oh, that's right. That's right. And that was very, very popular.
Yeah, we ran out of food, actually.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, the summer solstice one was amazing.
What about issues with, about quorums?
Again, based on my experience in the two communities where we had this, you would actually have them, you'd open a meeting because you're all there, but you wouldn't be conducting business. But it would be a meeting advertised as a meeting because you would be there as a quorum.
Okay.
And in Beaverton, usually the mayor, about halfway through the picnic would introduce him or herself in the council. And that's it. And it really is an opportunity to have some face-to-face time with your citizens.
National night out for the police would be a good one to have too because a lot of communities have that.
Yep, and we've talked about doing that as well, so. So if they're still interested in this, we'll leave it on the list. We'll put something together. We have time to put something together. I think we picked the parks.
We do have them. It's just we don't have those kind because we have the one at the, we work with the fire department. We work at the various ones at Christmas and all that, so maybe we could just do an annual list of what we're doing because we do do a lot.
Yes.
So.
It's just not our event. We're at the other events.
Right.
Something else for this list that I heard in the last week or so was a discussion about the method and timing in which boards and commissions are appointed and there's some, something cumbersome about the timing. For example, I think we have one person on budget committee that's coming up versus having them all. And so a lot of communities have all the timing as the calendar year. And so is something like that being worked on or should we get it on this list for now?
The problem with some of that has been people leave and then we put new people on. I think that's what happened on planning. There's two that are, were replacements that are going off and things like that, but we could do them every two years or something like that.
Well, again, I think when we talked about this last year and it didn't get put on your list, but, and I've talked to Sylvia and staff about this. In Beaverton, all of the boards and commissions, their term ends December 31st. So everybody's on the same, of all the different boards and commissions is on this, not at the same time, but you appoint usually in December on consent. Here's all the new people that are being appointed to the boards and commissions. So it really makes things more consistent. What I've noticed here is the terms are all over the place and it really is hard to track. The other suggestion, and she may kill me, she's sitting next to me, is instead of having your council liaisons or your staff people manage all that, in Beaverton, the city recorder managed all that. Because most city recorders are very, very good at those kind of details and taking kind of control of that, control with a small c and doing it on a consistent basis. We're all kind of all over the place here.
The only problem with that is you're going to have to interview everybody.
That could be a downside, but again.
You're talking 50 people.
If you're just saying, look, let's explore how other cities do this and maybe there's a more efficient, effective way to do it. Doesn't mean you have to do it, but by putting it on the list, it gives us direction to get it done.
Yeah, you certainly, you would not want to do it December. That would be a terrible choice.
It doesn't have to be December. I'm just saying that there are other ways of doing it.
Yeah, bring us back some ideas on that. No problem.
Well, isn't the reason why we have all these various term dates is because people leave a commission and they're appointed in some month and they serve a two-year term from that point? Instead of perhaps finishing out the term of the person they were appointed. And that is the, that's why we have so many staggers is we haven't necessarily been consistent and as.
Well, I know in Hillsborough, when I was appointed to be on the planning commission, originally I was appointed for a vacancy. So the person that I was promoted, or appointed to replace, I served that person's remaining term.
Right.
I didn't get a brand new two years.
Right.
I basically replaced someone that couldn't serve anymore, so I served like four months. And then I had to be reappointed for an extra year.
That's a good idea. Just have everybody drop it like June, yeah.
So I, all I'm suggesting is it probably deserves a look. We may not have any recommendations. Again, it's a little unusual to be all over the place. And it's not a criticism. It's just the way we've been doing it.
Possibly our consensus is we would like to see a, like a drop dead date in June for annual or biannual, however you want to do it. For, like planning commission, you'd want to do probably two years because it takes that long for them to get up to speed. And you wouldn't want to have to go through the interviews every year and all that. But, and they're different because they're actually in the code, so. But yeah, I think it's a great idea because it's a pain the way it is now.
Well, and you, Mayor, because you're involved with all those, it takes a lot of time and energy that you have to do in terms of.
Well, yeah, and it's hard because then Sylvia has to advertise them. You have to, you know, and some of the committees could actually just run short till the term, until the next term comes up, so.
Something else I had written down was there's a lot of discussion in the last six months about the modifying the Y's contract because there's a lot of changes needed. And I'm wondering if that's.
That's the recreational facility.
Yeah, I think that's really the.
That's what the recreational facility is.
I heard you say that, but I thought you meant something else. But you meant the Y?
She meant the Y.
Okay, I thought that got blended in with the senior center discussion. I kind of got lost there.
How about the, it's our biggest facility, recreational facility.
All right. I was wondering if we went from senior center to, I thought maybe they had a local mall at the senior center.
Well, the thing that's missing from the contract
On the same breath.
in my opinion was the maintenance schedule. You know, an agreement about who does what and when and how often and, and you know, exactly what Craig Sheldon and his department does, which is on a preventative maintenance schedule where everything is methodically reviewed or replaced or looked at every year. And for any city building, we should be doing that. And I'm sure he's already been doing that for years. And I think that's why Counsel Folsom mentioned, you know, the senior center has certainly improved a lot since we sort of stepped up that partnership between Mills on Wheels and the city to try to improve the overall appearance and cleanliness and usability of the senior center, so.
And we talked in our meeting today, we talked about that and he's, once the audit thing's completed, then he's going to sit down and discuss the contract and all that. So it will be coming back to us, but probably a couple of months, three months, four months, whoever.
Believe you're going to get, in addition to taking a look at the finances with the Y, you're going to look, you're going to get recommendations from Mr. Mooney saying, here's areas in your existing agreement that need to be looked at and improved. Because it's an old document and it was created at a different time and place, so I think you're going to see those recommendations. Love them?
Sorry.
Okay, I don't want to have to move it along, but I'd like to get Craig up here.
Yes, that's fine. Just want to make sure we have this covered.
Does anybody have anything else they want to do? Because, go ahead, Craig.
I just wanted to say one thing about the charter review committee. Obviously, that's up and running. And I don't know if everybody on council knows that what the charter review committee is sort of a two-phase process where they're taking a look at time-sensitive issues that are potentially, could affect elections this year, taking a look at putting those on the ballot in May and then things that are not time-sensitive or not related to election will probably be put on the November ballot, so.
I'm going to jump the gun here real quick on number 10, okay?
10, oh, go ahead.
Because we have discussed this and right now, the only changes that we're looking at is to put, change, Counsel Folsom's going to be the alternate on planning and Counsel Grant's going to go back on that water board. And those are the only two right now.
May I still be the liaison, the primary liaison to planning commission?
Yeah, I'll do that. But then there's some discussion on another issue that we're going to work out before we bring it up.
Okay.
So would everything else stay the same? Is that okay with you, Dave, to take back that water thing?
Yeah, if you want me.
I've enjoyed it, but I've seen enough.
I hear you clearly about that particular board. So, yeah, I'll do that.
Okay, so that's where it stands now. There won't be any other discussion on it tonight, okay?
Thank you.
So then we'll go to nine.
Oh, you didn't?
So Craig Sheldon's up here. You have seen this document in the past, but I don't think you've had the opportunity to delve in
Oh, here we go.
to the level that you would like. Craig and his staff have been working very hard at long-term facility needs, park replacement needs. You'll see a fleet plan in the near future, so this is your opportunity to ask Craig specific questions about this document. These have large dollars associated with them, so. So with that, can you introduce this once again? Mr. Sheldon?
You bet. So, can you hear me? Can you hear, no? Robin can't hear us.
I can hear now.
No? There? Okay. So this all ties back to each park. When you go through this, there's dollars and cents here on the sheet that I handed out tonight. And I just kind of want to talk about the next two or three years. As you'll see, there's about total in the next 10 years, about 3.9. 3.1 inflated cost roughly 3.9. Because what I, I don't want you to focus too much. You'll see in 17 where it shows over close to a million dollars. You've got $500,000 that year. It's roughly when the turf field at the high school comes up that we need to figure out how that's all gonna be paid with the school district. A school district puts about $25,000 away a year for that turf replacement. So, where we've got it 10 years, that's what, when we start having problems with our other turf, even though we went two years longer. So those projects could be moved out some, so don't focus on that million-dollar kind of number there. Just want to start in the 14-15 budget. So in our current budget, we put about $25,000 in there a year for trail maintenance. It got cut back to $5,000. We usually do about $25,000 worth of water technology, bringing our stuff up to a cal census, take a couple of parks and bring them up every year. So besides replacing the turf, they come in about $430,000 this year, as well as the playground structure at Murdoch Park. You don't have a lot in our budget, and these are all new numbers to everybody here that they're seeing. So this is what we'll be basing our budget off from. So where you see Snyder Park at the top, there's a variety of costs in 15, which is 14-15. You have infill of the baseball field, which was built in roughly 2007. So we'll be needing some money for that if we want it to continue to last. As well as seal coat, some walkways up there. That number's in there. Estella Olson, replacement of the playground equipment there. That's our next, I would say, out of all of our playgrounds. That's probably, we've had quite a bit of issues there. There's about $170,000 in there for the playground. There's some seal coating that needs to be done there, as well as there's some money set aside for, I don't know what you really want to call it, the dance floor down by the stadium, or down by the amphitheater, that's all, the concrete's all busted up down there. We've tried to fix it several times, but there's some money stuck aside in there to make some other repairs. Murdoch Park, there's observation deck is what, the $5,000 cost there, as well as upkeep on the shelter. Pioneer Park, there's $2,500 to do some work on the shelter there. Atlea Estates, which we don't really ever talk about at the Parks Board, but it's a section, a small park, open space over by, off of Upper Roy, down below, this down from Willamette, kind of where the mobile home housing is in there.
Oh, right.
So off of Roy Street there. But there's concrete that's probably 35, 40 years old back in there, I'm saying. It's all busted up, all, everything, the material needs, something needs to be done with it. Either it needs to be removed, or new material, we need to make that decision. So there's $15,000 in there for that. Then we have a high school, which would be a school district expense with about $15,000 is what it cost us last time that we infilled. Our soccer field. Sherwood Middle School, there's some recrowning that needs to be done. We did some this last year. And then we have some trail maintenance of $4,800. Some of that's signs, some crack sealing on our trails, and some bollards that need to be replaced. And just so you know, we did cut $20,000 out of our budget last year. So there's another $20,000 of deferred costs that didn't get done this year, so that we'll be putting in for. In 15-16, if the turf field at the Snyder Park's gonna, if we hopefully get it out to about 19, before we have to replace it, probably gonna have to do something with the base cutouts. So there's $10,000 for that. If we don't, if we can't get it out to 19, then I would say we wouldn't want to spend that since it's in the budget for the following year to replace. But hopefully, we can get it to 19. The log seating at the Snyder Park needs to be replaced, as well as some other crack sealing that's set up for that park. Replacement of the observation deck at Estella Olson. We've had issues there. There's crack sealing, as well as at Murdoch Park, crack sealing cost goes there. And Langer Park is the next playground that needs to be replaced. And Langer Park, that's in agreement with the HOA there. So that'll, we'll have to get that figured out. And then there's some stuff, small purchases for the different schools. But a lot of times, those schools, the leagues actually pay for some of that stuff, and we do the work to install them, or vice versa. So there's some other costs at the high school, softball fields, bases, home plate replacement. So all that stuff is laid out in here. There's trails, HOA-wise, seal coating of $5,800 in 15-16, and a small amount for crack sealing. And then you get into 16 and 17, which you have water pumps that are coming due at Snyder Park, as well as the turf field. The baseball would be coming up to its, beginning of its, end of its life cycle. Not saying that we can't push that out a couple of years. Don't get focused on those numbers of $215,000. You have seal coating of the parking lot on Division Street will be coming up, as well as some brick sealing and stuff in the concession slash restrooms. You have some crack sealing that needs to go on at Estella Olson, as well as at Oregon Trail. Pioneer Park would be the playground structure for that year at $110,000, so roughly what we're doing at Murdoch. There's some crack sealing and sealing that's gotta go on there. Langer Park, the benches and trash receptacles would be coming up, as well as we're probably gonna start having problems with the pumps and stuff that had installed at Canary Square by that time. Filter, pump filter, as well as the nozzle replacements. So that's about the time that we ran into problems with Snyder Park water feature. And then you have, the fieldhouse will be roughly the turf replacement going on at the fieldhouse. Like I said, we might be able to spread those out a little longer, but that's when they're gonna come due. And then again, we have a half a million dollars for the high school football field to be coming due. There's some replacing gravel in driveway, as well as bases on the high school varsity baseball field. High school softball complex, parking lot, you need seal coating there, as well as you have a variety of trail repairs that year. So that year brings a little over a million dollars. So when Joe was talking about the facility plan, you're gonna be looking at somewhere, I would say in the next 10 years, a couple million dollars in the facility plan that's gonna be coming in front of you, maybe next week or so, at the budget committee. I don't know if we're talking about that. But I'm not trying to put a downer on the night, but these are all facilities that have been built, and we've got to maintain them. And we also, our budget will be consisting of equipment replacement, as well as it has police cars in the vehicles, citywide fleet replacement program as well. That'll be done sometime early spring. So, and that number's gonna be up there, because there's a lot of vehicles that, and equipment that was purchased way back, and they're past their time right now. So I don't want to give that number out. But I know we're far enough along on the facilities plan when we start talking about the senior center. And we do have a plan, and it's all spelled out, how much per year that needs to be going into those facilities, as well as the YMCA right on. You might be able to move stuff out a few years, but it's gonna come due. So, I, just like I was talking about, the baseball turf, if we can get 12 years or 13 years out of that, and that's what we're gonna go for, but I would rather be safe than sorry and put it when it's gonna come due for life expectancy. Any questions?
So back in my day of selling chocolate to raise money for playground structures, it did not cost $170,000. Seriously, Archer Glen had virtually no playground structure when we moved in, and it was the second year of the school. And I think we were like, oh, my gosh, you know, $20,000, that's a lot. So why is the equipment 170 now? Because I think the Moms Club helped raise the money for the Estella Olson. No, that was probably two generations ago, wasn't it?
No, that was Moms Club.
But they, did they put in that new structure, Moms Club of Sherwood? The one that's there?
Yes.
Okay. So, so why is it 170?
So you have, you have removing the material that was there, digging in stuff out. You have concrete borders in some of the spots that's already been done, so you don't have to. But you get Estella Olson playground structure is bigger than Murdoch. And Murdoch Park itself was about $68,000, just off the state bid, just for the structure that we're putting in there. So these are numbers that we feel pretty solid on. It's usually about 20% of cost of the structure, to put the structure, install the structure.
Right.
So whatever, I would rather be a little high than versus low, because by the time you go through the public process, there might be some other material out there that people are wanting to use. So a different type of structure than what's there now. You know, there's been lots of conversation over the years about putting some sort of a shade at Estella Olson Park, because there's no trees around there. So some of those things are included as we move forward. Now, it doesn't mean that we have to go with $170,000 structure, but gotta be what we've heard from the community. I mean, that's, we've heard for shade over that thing probably for the last eight years. So.
So the Parks Board would vet the whole process around choice and cost, and then bring it back to recommendation. That's been the process, is that correct?
Yeah.
The Parks Board does? And then, I'm sorry, I'm a little dizzy. I had a question about, we were talking about infill at baseball fields and, you know, replacing bases and stuff. So how are we collecting from the leagues? I know we've talked about that a lot over the years. It wasn't enough to support the build of the fields. But what are we doing now, so that we can look at this for our future? We're not getting a fee?
As far as replacement revenue?
Well, no, I mean, don't we get a portion of the fee that each child plays to pay, pays to play? Sorry.
Yes.
For surgery, I think?
Or what is that fee used for?
For maintenance.
Just maintenance? Or just like mowing and cleanup and striping? Or what? Is none of the money that we're collecting from the individual leagues and players, that is none of that $175 that I pay coming back to help build a fund, to help when infills need to be replaced and stuff?
It's paying for ongoing maintenance. League fees come in, and we share the costs with the school district for maintaining their fields. So the revenue that comes in offsets our expenditures to maintain those fields and different programs. And then what's left, the school district pays us half. So we don't bring in more revenue than we expect.
You just bring in what you need to maintain it annually for the use of the field, but not to do any maintenance that is required to keep the field going over time? I can't think of the word.
We don't collect any money?
For replacement.
For replacement.
Capital or anything like that?
Correct.
Currently.
But we've been talking about this, right? I'm not just in my head saying...
For the last three years.
Right, okay, okay. We've been talking about this, but we have yet to pull the trigger and make any decisions about. Because we really need, this is a big problem. We need to look at the whole problem and say, is there multiple solutions? Is there pieces of the puzzle that will come together? Or is it one broad... Okay, so right now, the answer is no dollars for any of this.
Correct. And can I clarify one thing?
Yeah.
We, the revenue we bring in does not cover the cost of the basic maintenance we're doing.
Right.
We're subsidizing it.
Correct.
I think what we were talking about even three years ago, when I first got in council, was getting a dedicated fee. If, say, it's $175 to play soccer, then add a $5 fee to each participant that's, say, to go to turf replacement at Snyder, something of that effect. Not that that's exactly what it'd be, but those, that's the sort of idea that we had discussed. So there'd always be this reserve fund to pay for those big-ticket items.
I, as I recall, and Counselor Grant and Vice President Henderson were on council when those facilities were built, and that was actually part of the discussion at the time. But it just didn't happen, correct?
Yeah, I think it actually started and stopped, I think at one time we, no?
I don't know.
Okay, all right. You're right. We've been talking about this as long as I've been on council.
Yeah, I think it was one of my first questions in January of 2008, when I was sworn in. Because I had this concern, because these great fields, but no way to sustain the maintenance of them and the capital improvements. And what was conveyed to me at the time was that the city manager at the time didn't feel like the community would support that. But I think we have to have the conversation, because the community wants to keep their assets whole. And that's what Craig is wanting us to look at, right? So, okay.
Can we double back to priorities of the upcoming year and talk about that? Or maybe, either that or have that be part of the budget discussion that's coming?
Right. We have explored it internally, and what we found was what that fee would need to be is exorbitant.
It's not $5?
Yeah. And there's no way that the community would even be willing to accept that. And then it's how do you, how do you spread that fee across people who don't use the turf field versus who does? You know, what leagues? Because there's really only two leagues that use turf.
I get that, but I think that maybe a discussion, perhaps not tonight, needs to be had of at least going to those people and saying, some component of what the numbers Craig's has given us has to be also borne by the people whose feet are wearing out the turf. You know, and then the rest, we're gonna have to. Because right now, we have to pay all of it.
Right. I think we just, you as council need to decide, what are you willing to subsidize, and what do we need to collect from them?
That's, we have to have the discussion.
I think that that's the important point, and I'm really grateful. I'm sure Counsel Butterfield has some opinion, but I think we have to have the discussion. I think we, we open up the dialogue. Parks Board would be a great place to start and say, who do we ask to the table to talk about this? And then, you know, invite citizens to, you know, say what they think, be users. I have to say, we had to go out of district for my son's training in swimming when he got to be six foot four and was sharing the pool with 35 kids. And we paid a lot when we went over and trained at another facility. And it didn't seem like that much to me, but when I came back in Sherwood, I'm like, we pay nothing. Because even for a resident rate where I was training, it was a lot more than Sherwood charges for certain things. So I think we might be, but, but, you know, we value, you know, our youth. I know Bill started the Road Pay to Play program. It's been hugely successful. So maybe we can wrap our arms around it some way. Because I don't want to penalize the families and the kids, but we have to make some sense here of this problem.
Counselor Folsom, I think this is really a two-step process. Craig is working hard to identify what the needs are over the long term, in terms of what we need to spend money on to replace the infrastructure we've already built.
Yep.
The harder conversation is how do we figure out how to pay for that? And who pays?
Well, I'm really appreciative of this. This, this document, I kept the other, the notebook and was just going through it last week. But this really lays it out and prepares you for a way to look at it in the future and really start to plan and have those conversations. But from my perspective, this is a priority to me. We gotta get it done this year. We can't talk about it three more years, because it's really, that million-dollar year, it's not very far away.
No, it's not.
We just want to be able to make sure that we've got the money there to keep our turf fields and other stuff as nice as they are now.
They're great.
We're just concerned about budget.
So on that topic, topic, obviously, we have a lot of really great partnerships with organizations in our town, one being the school district. So do we have an open dialogue with the school district about a number of these facilities that frankly, we don't own, but we maintain? About, you know, what the long-term either maintenance or capital needs are? Because I think this would be a great discussion to have with the school district, who's, you know, obviously has budget challenges as well. But I don't necessarily want to, you know, leave them out of the loop. A lot of these facilities, Craig's department maintains the maintenance, landscaping maintenance for the district through an IGA, because they wanted to get out of that maintenance business. And obviously, you know, the high school was built with, the high school field was partially built in a partnership. And, you know, it would be a great dialogue to have with them, because I don't necessarily think that we should bear 100% of the burden of replacement. But, and, oh, I also had one other thing since we were talking about, you know, replacement is, is it every year, Kristen, or every other year, that the State Parks and Rec has a granting opportunity?
They have it every year, but it cycles how large it is.
Right. So I was wondering if staff would kindly look up. I know it's always a... Yeah, there's like a deadline, and then you have to go make a presentation. And we haven't been successful in the past, but we've certainly got a very large list.
Yes, we do.
But it can be used for something like this, or does it have to be new? Does it have to be a new project?
Yeah, I thought it was mostly capital and...
So, so a replacement?
Yeah.
So could it potential, yeah, could you potentially then use it for Estella Olson?
Kristen, can you just come up to the mic real...
Sorry.
Sorry. And while she's coming up, Council President, going back to your question before I forget, we've been talking with the school superintendent about those issues, but that has not been a discussion with the school board.
Right.
Right.
In terms of the long-term needs, so we can elevate that.
So maybe a joint work session?
Yes.
In the near future might be a good idea.
And they're just starting to look at their long-term facility needs, which.
Right.
They're mainly concerned about classroom space, but classrooms bring more other things as well. So it's a timely topic to bring to their attention, so. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yes, sorry for yelling from the audience. Um, yes, I believe it can be used for replacement as well, as long as it was a total replacement, not just partial of whatever that was, like for example, a playground structure. So not maintenance, but replacement. Uh, cause we looked at the master plan for Stella Olson, and replacing the play structure there, as well as some of the other improvements we wanted to do, uh, was one of the grants that we proposed. So I can look into that and see where they are cycle-wise and.
Yeah, does anybody on council have any concerns about looking at that opportunity? Okay.
The, if you recall, and I can't remember off the top of my head, the issue was the match. They required, um, if, I believe it was 60, 40 on the match. Um, so you do need to have dedicated funds for that project. So we'd have to look at which projects.
Budget process for 14, 15. Thank you.
There. My turn. So Craig, we need about $300,000 a year. To meet our goal.
Roughly, yeah.
So 3,200 kids use those fields and you divide that into 300,000. That's how much we want each one of those kids to pay. Correct?
Those are your words, not his.
I'm just trying to clarify this for everybody.
Somewhere along the lines, I mean, that was cost recovery, but, uh, somewhere along the lines. Hate to look at fees and all that, but it'd be interesting to see how Sherwood compares with some of the other districts around here, uh, for the fee. I mean, they run in, they have to run in the same problems we're having here.
Yep.
But not all of that 300,000 is for the fields and the playing.
I was gonna make that point.
Some of it is just recreational.
Yeah.
But the point I was trying to make is Matt, $5 per kid's not gonna cut it.
No.
It's actually 900.
But the point is, it's, it's a big number and we gotta figure out how to, you know, take care of it. Cause nobody wants these facilities to go to waste or get to the point where they're deteriorated. And we have lawsuits, because kids are playing on these broken pieces of equipment.
Especially in the, especially on the sports fields. I mean, there's a whole concussion and everything that's out there for turf fields right now, and G-Max testing and everything that's going on out there. It's scary, uh, on that part of it. So you wanna make sure your fields are up.
I would like to see the discussion, pardon me, based on the amount we're planning to spend over the next 10 years on turf, because that's, that's an identifiable wear and tear item, and the wear and tear is coming from the sports activities. And then you could, you know, cause I'd have a hard time going to them and saying, hey, you need to pay this much money, because we gotta play, replace play structures. They're gonna be going, you know, and so, uh, but, but we could make an honest case, isn't it? We're wearing them out from this activity, so this activity has to at least pay X percent. And that's a reasonable thing to go to. Yeah, no, it can't be $900, you know?
Like there's 1,300 for softball. That's a doable number.
Well, that's the thing, you know, parents are paying thousands of dollars to have their kids involved in some of these sports. So, uh, but, but still, I, I just don't think the number would be 900 if we identified only the, the wear and tear items that are associated with those sports. And then we would have to pick up, we'd have to find the other, the rest of the two and a half million. We'd have to do that still. But in terms of the fee we charge.
What drives expense.
Um, at least it would be a reasonable conversation, seems to me.
You could even put a fee on, you know, like attendance to football games, a small fee on their admission that would go to replacement. I don't know if you could do that, but, you know, people are gonna go anyway. If it's an extra five bucks, who cares? You know, I mean, you're getting packed stadiums.
OSAA, I think, um, regulates the, the fees going to the games. But still, I mean, ideas like that, we have to come up with.
Okay. Anything else at this point that, questions for Craig?
So how will you, how will we take this information and use it in our next budget?
Well.
So you said you started out, um, last year you had $20,000 cut from your, from your maintenance fund, correct? And what would you have spent that on?
Uh, deferred trail. If you go through here and you look at some of these trails that were built in the 90s or in the 80s, uh, there, a lot of them are completely shot. And there hasn't been until the last probably three or four years, there was never any money in the budget for trail maintenance.
Right.
So you have all the deferred costs that we're just trying to catch up with on the trails. I mean, and we only have, what, four mi- a little over four miles of trails? So.
Right.
Um, it's just not been a high priority in the past for trail maintenance. But, you know, you probably spend probably $25,000 a year on vegetation maintenance, I'd say on our trail systems. And we were putting $25,000 into the trails as either asphalt, asphalt repairs, crack sealing, or seal coating on the trails.
So under your, uh, on the back page, you have a Woodhaven HOA trails one through eight. Do we get any, do we have any partnership with the HOA to help maintain those trails?
We do. There's certain, there's certain trails throughout Woodhaven that's maintained by the HOA.
Okay.
And then we're responsible for the asphalt, as well as removal, removal of trees, that kinda stuff. Just depends on this, what section it went in. But there is a responsibility of the HOA too. It's just not on the asphalt. The city is responsible for the asphalt.
Okay. So do you have a, um, a similar list like you did for the pavement management index, where you have the worst trails, you know, like your top five trails that really need attention, kind of like Lincoln, at Lincoln Street? Um, that you could provide us sometime in the future, maybe for us to consider as far as?
It's probably not broke down like the pavement management system, but we have our worst case, yeah.
Right.
I mean, if anybody's ever been behind St. Charles, there's a trail that goes nowhere.
Oh, yes.
In bad condition.
Just stops.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's our worst trail.
Okay.
Probably.
Okay, so I'm sorry I interrupted you. How will you take, how will you, how will we utilize this information in our budget process?
So this, just what we talked about, we'll probably, when it leaves public works, uh, for Joe to look at, what I just talked about in 14, 15 will be in there.
Okay.
As well as facility repairs, uh, out of the facilities, uh, referred plan, as well as our equipment and everything will be in the budget out of our replacement plan.
Okay.
In my response, which will be the same question that budget committee and you ultimately will ask, now that we have this plan and identified projects, I'm gonna ask Craig, in your proposed budget for your department, is everything covered? Which you're supposed to get done in 2014, 15. And if the answer is yes, you know, that, that's important. If it's no, we gotta figure out how to fund it and how to pay for it. So, uh, you'll ask the same question, because you have a lot more information than you've had. And then the other question is, what about the future years? Are we putting any money away for the future years? So we're not kicking the can as we've done over the years, which I know you don't wanna do. So it's gonna be a challenging process to meet next year's demands, but also put money aside for the future. And finding that balance will, makes the budget process, you know, challenging. The other thing I think that I will do, um, as a lesson from last year is, uh, a privilege from some counselors, when I got the budget requests from all the departments and we ran the numbers, we were upside down, $900,000. So I cut the budget, cause I have to give you and the budget committee a balanced budget. I've heard from folks, you wanna see what those cuts are. You wanna see what I cut. And I think in terms of transparency, we'll do a better job this year. Because the way the process works is they do their budget requests for their own departments in terms of what their needs are. They come in to Julie, she runs the numbers, and then she comes down to my office and tells me how bad the numbers look initially. And then we start working from there. So I think, like I said, if, if those initial numbers come in upside down, in terms of we're not getting the revenue projected to cover those expenses, and I start making those choices, you'll know what those decisions are better than last year. And that's a very normal process. Every city goes through that process. The initial budget requests, you, you don't have all the resources to do everything that the departments want. Anything else, Craig? Okay. Anything else for the council?
Thank you, Craig. Very much.
Thank you, Greg.
I just don't, I don't worry about all the numbers and stuff that's in certain years where it looks like a million, cause like I said, it, that's just the life expectancy. It doesn't mean that it can't go out another year.
Right.
You know, if there's a risk factor there, we really wanna have to take a look at it, such as Snyder Park Soccer Field was, uh, becoming a risk factor. And that we really did it when it become a risk factor then. So there's a whole rating system on that from the risk factor side. So just cause you see a million dollars doesn't mean that we can't try to stretch that out to 18, 19 or come on out, so.
Mayor, anything else tonight?
We have three minutes. Does anybody else have anything? Go ahead.
Very briefly, I, I, we, if I understand, uh, on item 10, we're gonna just, um, discuss that on another night.
Well, I'm gonna meet with some people, discuss it one-on-one with some issues we've had.
Uh-huh.
So other than that, everything just gonna stay the same.
Okay, cause I, I think like the chamber needed some clarity and.
That's right, and we're, we're gonna, I talked to Matt, and then I talked to Linda, and I've talked to Chrisanne, and we're gonna meet a couple of us at a time to get clarification and work it out.
That's a good idea. I, I think that's a good way to work it out. Um, and, and so, uh, one, very briefly, I, I'm written down for budget committee and we have some interviews coming up, but I, 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 I don't think there's real clarity on budget committee liaisonship right now. Did you wanna do the interviews?
Yeah, I'd like to do the interviews.
Okay, so Sylvia, just go ahead and change that, um, take me off.
That's the only one, I think.
Huh?
There's nobody else wanted to change anything, did they?
Well, my other point is this list has me on.
Oh, okay, yeah, can we update them?
Do you have, do you have the list in some of your?
Where is it?
Because we will have to change the water thing and, um.
Actually, that, that list still has that. I think this list is as it was at the end of the last, last year's planning.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay.
So, so are there any other changes or?
I've got one somewhere.
The only one that'd be Butterfield is going off of planning.
As the alternate.
Right, Robin's gonna be at the next planning commission, cause I'll be gone, right, Robin?
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Once. He's, he's pretty there all the time.
You're, you're part, I don't see anything changed.
So Mayor Julie will coordinate with you for the, I think we have five or six applicants? How many? Eight applicants.
Oh, my. Cause it was like 10,000 a year, so 10,000 a year. Spread over, now football has to.
Well, they have, during the summer, there's 3,200 kids playing on that field. Like I said, well, five times, you know, $3,200.
Oh, yeah. You should see the pile of paperwork I've been flying through regarding grants.
Anybody have anything on the local or regional groups they wanted to change? West Side Economic Alliance, you do that, right? I don't do that one, so. Okay. It's on the very bottom. Did you get that one up?
I'm sorry, no.
Uh, West Side Economic Alliance is her, not me.
So just one council member?
Yeah, and anybody can go.
All just remove the mayor as the primary and just keep it open?
It's open to anybody, yeah.
Sure.
And Impact, take us off, we don't do Impact anymore. We're not on Impact.
Oh, we're not?
Yeah.
What was that?
It's. Yeah, but we, I go to a different one on that. That's actually one person, one mayor from all the mayors now. It's, I believe this time it's, um, Forest Grove.
It rotates?
Yeah, every two years, I think it changes, yeah.
Add the charter review committee?
Oh, yeah, that's her.
So we'll add that.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Anything else for this evening?
When, when will we see the budget committee agenda? Tomorrow, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.